Hi, welcome everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the June 20th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. First up, may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Here.
Mayor first.
Here. Thank you. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up on the agenda is open time for public comment. This is the time in the meeting that we set aside for people to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Yep, please approach the podium. We are video recording the meeting and we must have you speaking into the microphone. State your name and where you live, and you've got three minutes.
My name is Bob Goncalos. I live in Mariner Cove, on the other side of the freeway. And I welcome this opportunity to complain about something that's bothered me for years. And I'm going to tell you guys, maybe you can fix it, maybe not. It's the traffic light situation on Paradise Drive. I really don't understand why they can't be synchronized or at least hooked together in some way that you can drive 50 feet without coming to another red light. And the other thing that's so darn annoying is the right-hand turn off of Harbor, you know where Echo Street is and all that. Well, cars are always coming out of there. There's a lot of houses. And they turn right because they're going to head for the freeway. Well, there's this trigger in the pavement that immediately triggers the traffic light to turn red on Paradise until we all have to stop. This guy's going to turn right. Well, if they could just put a 10-second delay for that trigger before it triggers, the guy would turn right and it wouldn't block the traffic and stop. It's just a real pain in the behind. And, you know, that whole thing, you've got lights right, they just don't, it's always red when you get there. They don't work together at all. And I think that's a solvable thing. I don't know whether the city farms that out to some company that services traffic lights, but if there's anything you could do to mention that, thank you.
Thank you for coming. I'm guessing we have older technology there, but our TAM manager heard, as did our Public Works Department back there, so. Yes, exactly.
Patty Stolier, Casa Buena Drive, age-friendly Corder Madera. Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow at 1:00 at the CMPA Community Room is the Travel Tips for Seniors. So when we were trying to find a speaker for this one, I tried to see what other travel tips for seniors had done, and there were none. So this is a very unique, not very unique, a unique opportunity to hear travel tips for seniors. So if you know anybody that is interested, 1 o'clock at CMPA Community Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seen none, let's move on to presentation. First thing up is the presentation of Citizen of the Year Award. It's kind of a special one this year because it's not to any one citizen, but rather a group of citizens that worked for years planning our lovely town's centennial year-long celebration. So I want to thank personally everybody that served on that committee. I thought it was just very well-run. They had so many activities planned throughout the entire year, from the New Year's Gala to usher in the centennial year, to Centennial Weekend, to events every single month of the year. So I thought it was just a fabulous celebration. And let's see, we have the chairs here, Susie Beatty, Jonna Hale, Becky Reed is not here.
She is out of town.
Okay. And Larry served as the Finance Director for the committee also. But I know there were so many more people that served on the committee, including Carla.
Including you.
Including me, but I'm looking out there and I know about, so. Could everybody who served on the committee please stand? All right. So.
I can say one thing. One person from San Rafael who is Citizen of the Year for Corder Madera as well.
San Rafael, well, all right, we'll allow an interloper. It's okay.
I'm attractive.
We're flexible, we're flexible. So we have a proclamation, it's not a very long one, so I'm going to read it, and then I think the council will need to take a quick little vote. So let me just read this. "The Town Council of the Town of Corder Madera hereby presents this award for 2017 Citizen of the Year to the Corder Madera Centennial Committee. In recognition of the committee's contributions to the Town of Corder Madera throughout the town's 2016 centennial year, and in appreciation of the more than two years of event and activity planning accomplished by over 40 dedicated residents and community business partners, the Corder Madera Town Council extends its sincere gratitude for your service to our community." Let me sign this. Mary?
I'd like to move that we adopt and approve that award.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. It's official. Congratulations. Do we want to, we should make three of those for each of the chairs, I think, so.
I was actually, if I could make them for everybody.
For every participant? Jonna gets first dibs because she's Jonna.
I will make them.
Okay. And I would also like to announce that at the 4th of July parade, there will be a special motorized cable car for committee members to ride in. So you'll have your, you'll be traveling in style in the parade. Congratulations. Would any of you like to say anything?
I will. Thank you.
I'll just say thank you very much for every single person who was on this committee. And it was so much fun. It was tremendous amount of work, but it was really, really fun and really rewarding. And so I know that everybody on the whole committee felt that way. And I'm sorry, everybody can't be here, but I know they're thankful. So thank you very much from all of us. I do think it's worth taking a photo. Would it be possible for everybody who is on the committee who's here tonight, maybe in front of the picture of Piccolo Pavilion? Can we do that real quick? Would you mind? Oh, perfect.
Is it going to be long before?
Why don't you come up front? I'm going to be in the back.
The budget?
Is it just the budget, right? Is there something else? Oh, the election thing?
It's really just.
It's really just the budget.
Thank you. Is there anybody who didn't get one of these ever? Ever in their whole life? Alrighty, thank you all so much for coming. Look forward to having you stay through the budget discussions.
We're going to go turn on our TVs and watch you.
Oh, sure, okay.
I bet you will.
There has been a suggestion made that because there are members in the audience that were applicants for the Planning Commission earlier this evening, that they would like, they're here and they would like, I believe, an answer. So we thought that maybe we'd move up that particular agenda item. It is Agenda Item 7.1.2, Consideration and Possible Action to Ratify Subcommittee Recommendations for Appointment of Several People to Various Boards. May I have, would anybody like to move the?
I'll move that we move it up on the agenda now.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Great, 7.1.2. So first of all, why don't we move ahead to the Planning Commission applicants? That, the Subcommittee responsible for the interviews held a meeting this evening from 5:30 to 7:00 and have made, may I just go ahead and made a recommendation to appoint Peter Chase and Charles Lee to the Commission, and appoint as an alternate Margaret Bandell? Bandell?
Bandell.
Bandell. So, would we like to take that one first, then we'll get through these other items? Would any of the people who did the interviews like to speak to this or make a motion?
Sure.
Do you want to start?
Yeah, I will try to be as brief as we can so we can get through. We know the budget's a lengthy item tonight, but Carla and I had really the privilege of interviewing very strong candidates tonight, and we're very grateful to Peter Chase and welcome Charles Lee and Margaret Bandell and Eli Beckman for coming out. They were all excellent, and frankly, the town would be lucky to have any of them involved. And, you know, we were very content with our choice here, but I hope that Margaret and Eli know how much we respect their background and how we hope they continue to stay involved because our town is richer because of them.
Very well said. Thank you, Sloan. Again, it was one of those times where it was a hard decision to make because everybody that applied for the Planning Commission was very, very well-qualified. And so it was, it was a difficult decision, but I, as Sloan said, I do hope that those that weren't appointed will certainly make another effort to get involved with the town. And I just want to thank everybody for participating, and welcome aboard, Charles.
So can I do both in one motion of some kind, or do we need to do it separately? Does it matter? All right, I'd like to move that we appoint, or reappoint Peter Chase and appoint Charles Lee to our Planning Commission.
And do you want to appoint the alternate?
And also Margaret Bandell as our alternate. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second that.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Thank you all very much for your interest. Let's move on to the Parks and Rec Commission. There's been a recommendation to appoint Nathan Blomgren, Fred Cassisa, Eric Engstrom, and Eileen Phipps to the Parks and Rec Commission. Would anybody like to comment on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. All right, and to the Flood Control Board, there is a recommendation to appoint David Bell, Bob Bundy, Keith Forsman, and Pat Shea. Would anybody like to comment on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. And finally, to represent the town on the Marin County Commission on Aging, we have a recommendation for the reappointment of Carol Zeller.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Thank you all.
Very efficient, Diane, nice work.
Thank you. Hopefully that'll take care of appointments for a little while. Quite a few that we had to do. For a year, all right. Thank you very much. Alrighty, let's move on to Town Manager and Council Reports. First up, Takus Mano, our Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Three quick updates. Most importantly, I want to introduce our new Town Attorney, Teresa Stricker. And we're very lucky to have her. She already, within just a week of just getting up to speed and talking to her on a number of issues, I'm very excited to have her on board, so welcome, Teresa.
Welcome.
Next, almost just as important, is that I'm going to be taking vacation after the budget.
What?
Yeah, so I will, I'm planning on taking a two-week vacation starting Monday next week, so miss me.
You going to Bahamas?
Yeah, no, I'm just going to be home in bed, I think. Dave will be in charge, holding down the fort. And lastly, I just want to mention that it's been a little bit under the radar, but the disaster preparedness groups in our town will be doing some volunteerism on the 24th, this Saturday, from 2:00 to maybe 4:00 or 5:00. And we're going to be putting together the Stop Bleed kits that we talked about a few council meetings ago. Again, our goal is to outfit every household in Corder Madera with a Stop Bleed kit. And so the town is hosting that event, and I think we have up to 40 to 50 volunteers, so we're really excited about that. And with that, that's the end of my update.
Thank you. Council reports. Jim?
Well, MTC, or?
Yeah, I'm putting your mic down so we can all hear you.
Oh, Marin Transportation Agency met. They've approved the budget for this upcoming year. They've also renewed the, they either renewed or they're in the process of renewing the franchise agreement with Comcast and AT&amp;T. You know, that's important things that they're working on, so that's about it.
Okay. There was a pretty critical letter to the editor for, against Marin Telecommunications. Is the board discussing some of those issues that were brought up?
They are discussing the issue of the audit. And one reason, as I recall, the letter to the paper mentioned, why isn't the audit complete? As someone who's had to do audits, if the counterparty doesn't give you the information, you can't wrap up the audit. And so they're having difficulty getting the information from Comcast. And then once that's done, there's a discrepancy between what we think the right number is, what Comcast is, and they're going to be resolving those outstanding issues, so.
Okay.
And then, we'll then start the next audit cycle.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, we had Catherine Way and I had a series of meetings with Dan and Todd about the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Council culminating in a meeting of the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Council, which was incredibly well-intended, tons of energy. I think we had about, what, 20 people there, in which we announced John and Lee Howard are going to be taking over as the coordinators for the group with, for the next year. And our, we are establishing some goals. Most importantly, we're going to be trying to add some neighborhood response groups, and we're going to be getting to the council hopefully when we can get on the agenda the next couple months and give you a short presentation about what our specific goals are going to be for the next year. But we're hoping to set goals, measure against them, and then come back to you here and tell you how we did against them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Down here, Sloan?
The only report of any kind I have is sort of a reminder, our local Assemblyman, Mark Levine, has, is going to have an office hour, he calls it mobile office hours, at our local community center this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00, in case anybody in our fair city has questions about legislative issues or something that our Assembly member can help with. Mark is eminently approachable, has an encyclopedic command of all things Marin County, and so he's a good person to ask anything about anything related to the legislative world. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
By the way, can I ask one question though, Carla?
Yes.
When is this letter, where, what date can I go to the paper to find that letter about the, that you were just talking about, that you said was critical? Because I don't know what the issue is.
Maybe Friday?
All right.
It was within the last week.
Okay.
Marin IJ.
I'll just do a search.
And like many letters to the editor, you don't know exactly how accurate it is.
I just wasn't sensitive to the?
Marin Telecommunications is one of those agencies that just, we don't discuss very often.
Right.
So that's why I was asking a follow-up question, because I'm just kind of curious about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just a couple of things. Age-friendly Corder Madera is in the final throes of developing strategic plan for 2017. It's part of the requirement from World Health Organization to maintain our membership as part of the global network of age-friendly cities. And when that is completed, it will be presented to the council. Also, I got a call from Julie Kritzberger at the Chamber. She is in dire need of some volunteer help for the 4th of July. So if anybody can spare some time on the 4th of July to give Julie a call at 924-0441, or email her at julie@cordermodera.org. She would very much appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things related to the Transportation Authority of Marin. I attended the Executive Committee meeting. We have a project that we have done some preliminary design on. It incorporates both pedestrian and bicycle, as well as roadway improvements around Warnham and Nellan. We have gone out for funding multiple times over the years. We're going to go out again under the ATP, and Alternative Transportation Project is, I think, what ATP stands for. So TAM will be resubmitting on our behalf, and this is a project, by the way, that's both Corder Madera and Larkspur jointly. TAM, the executive director of TAM seems to think we have a pretty good chance at getting funding because last time around, we scored very high, but just not quite high enough to actually qualify for funding. So hopefully this time we'll get it. I did, however, want to mention that the forecast going forward for the crossing guard program is looking a little bleak. The number of sites that are seeking funding for crossing guards has increased greatly since the program was first started. It was pretty much first started under Measure A when that tax passed in 2004, I think it was, 2003, 2004. The process now is much more competitive. We do counts out there to see how many kids are, you know, go through that particular location, and then all the sites are ranked, and the top, so many, get funded. Beyond that, if there is a particular site that is of great concern, maybe the school district and the town, or whoever else wants to pitch in, maybe can fund the crossing guard. That's kind of how it's been ongoing. But we were, the cities have been warned that starting in early 2018, planning for the 2018-2019 school year, it's possible that some of the sites might be on the chopping block because there's just simply not enough funding to meet the need. So wanted to give you the heads up. And that is all I have to report. All right, so let's move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They may be approved by a single motion. Any member of the Town Council, Town staff, or the public may remove an item for discussion. We have discussed, was there one that we wanted to remove, or no?
Are you including the sanitary district items?
Can that be done by one motion, or is that to be two?
That's it. Let's do that one. Let's do the sanitary, yes. Let's just do the town items first.
I'll make a motion after public comment or whatever.
Okay, 5.1.1 through 5.1.7.
Second.
Okay. Would anybody like to remove any item? Seen none?
Move.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Okay, let's take the sanitary district item. Again, this is a consent item. This is the one that I actually wanted to discuss, but seeing as how it's the only sanitary district item, I would like to actually discuss this. So this is Agenda Item 5.2.1, the approval of the response letter to Marin LAFCO, which is the Marin Local Agency Formation Commission. They performed a wastewater municipal service review, and this is our response letter to LAFCO about that review. So let me turn to that page again, 5.2.1. The reason I wanted to discuss this is because Nisha worked so hard on this. I worked pretty hard on it, too. We really combined all of our comments into this one letter, and it was so frantic at the last minute, I think it could use a little bit more editing. Not to mention that Carla, if you would be willing to do this with me, because you sit on LAFCO, I think just one more time to review this and make sure we're not missing anything would be a good idea.
Sure. There was just one thing that I was going to stick in.
Okay.
And that was just on page two. Let's see here. In number three, in the first sentence, while build-out estimates will change, an increase in the future in step with general plan updates, and I put "and potential annexations."
Well, that was actually LAFCO, everything in italics is LAFCO's wording.
Right, but I think that we need to put that because that, there are, even this month, there's been an annexation.
Okay.
Into the district, and there are going to continue to be annexations.
But we shouldn't change their wording, is my point.
No, 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 no.
But let's refer to that in our response.
Right.
Just below that.
Right.
So, and I had?
Diane, do you have a second?
Well, can't we just make a motion that Diane and Carla will wrap it up?
Right, right. And I had several little things that I wanted, including I found a mistake in their numbers. They listed the exact same pipeline replacements for three or four years between SD2 and Olaf Ross Valley. I don't know if those are SD2 numbers or Ross Valley.
Do you remember the highway numbers?
The highway numbers, what?
Awesome, it was awesome.
Remember?
Right.
Oh, oh, that.
Yeah, Lions Street, Lions Street, and so on.
Golden Gate, toll booth.
It's awesome, right.
Anyway, can we just move that?
It's on YouTube if people are interested.
We need to comment or something? Can we just move that Diane and Carla finish it up?
Yeah, we need a public comment in just a second, so, okay. It was option number four. Would anybody like to comment on this? Seen none? We have a motion in a second, I guess?
Yes.
This is for sanitary district item, right?
Sanitary district.
Okay, so I have to change my phrasing.
Yes.
Board Member Andrews.
Yes.
Board Member Bailey.
Yes.
Board Member Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice President Condon.
Yes.
President first.
Yes. Thank you.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yes.
Also, I wanted to thank Nisha and Diane, too, that you both did a great job of impressing on LAFCO the disadvantage that it would be for San Two to be arbitrarily consolidated with other districts.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's move on now to public hearing. Agenda Item 6.1. Agenda Item 6.1, this is the Town Operating Budget, the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2017-2018 Town Operating Budget, the proposed fiscal year 2017-2018 Capital Budget, and proposed fiscal year 2017-2018 Budget for Sanitary District Number Two of Marin County, referred to as the Sewer Fund.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is going to be a team effort with our Finance Director, Daria Carrillo, and our Public Works Engineer, David Bracken, and Nisha Patel. First, I just want to start off, I forgot my antenna, so bear with me with that, and I don't want to hurt our new technology, but I want to start off with some acknowledgements, and then kind of share with you where we're trying to go with the overall budget process in this budget, because this is a work in progress, and I, and I know that we, we've talked about this, but I want to make sure that the community and our public knows what we're trying to work towards. But this would not be possible without the work of Daria. I'm just so pleased with the work that she's accomplished in such a short period of time. I think I was sharing this with one of the council members last week. This is probably professionally the most difficult thing that I've ever done, been a part of, and it doesn't have anything to do with budget. It has to do with, you know, with what we had here for 40 years and George Warman. I call him Rain Man, because only he knows what's in his head, and he does everything manually. And for those of us that, you know, have grown up with technology, it's, doing things manually, it's just, I can't wrap my head around it, I still today. And the scary part is, 40 years of that, and, and, you know, and this is not, I do not make this negative, I mean it that I'm impressed, he is one of a kind, and he has really positioned the town in a place for success in the future. But to change the budget process to where I think someone like me can understand it, someone in the community, this council can follow it, because he tracked every cent a certain way in a specific line item. An example would be for chartered accounts, and I won't get into the definition of chartered accounts, but in talking to Daria, you know, and, and other finance directors, usually you would have about 30 pages of chartered accounts, and that's what everything works off of. It's apples-to-apples comparison from 1984 to 2017, and that's important for when you talk about long-term analysis. Our chartered accounts are 100 and, 100, so it's triple that. And, and the problem with it is then, every, every person, you know, budgets a little bit differently, and the problem for us, an example would be OpenGov. You know, I'm a visual person, so I like to see charts. Well, you're not going to see charts in this budget, and there's a reason for it. Moving forward, you absolutely will, and that's the OpenGov platform that we've talked about. But an example of how difficult it is to go back in time and compare the past to where we're going in the future, that process normally takes two weeks. If you're a large city like San Francisco, it could take up to four weeks, and this is by the experts with OpenGov. We are now eight months into the process in our platform, we're not quite there yet. So the good news is, the way we budgeted, and the expertise that we've had in our beloved Town Treasurer, we're lucky, we're better for it. The problem is, when you start to move forward with technology from manual in the future, it becomes quite the, quite the task. And so my point is, I've just been impressed with how Daria's been able to sit down with George and, and work on that transition, and to understand it, and to put it into this document, and only Daria can explain it, and I'm going to turn this over to her in a second. But I, I just really want to emphasize that point. When you look at this budget, a couple of things. This budget, you have to be really careful for comparing 2016 to 2017. You can't do it. Because what you're going to see in 2017, what we really try to do, we try to pull out cost, unfunded liability cost. You know, it's not spread out in, over 25 pages in each of the departments. There's a single line item that we can track it moving forward. And so we pulled some of those, those, those costs, or expenditures, or even revenues in some cases, from each of the individual departments, and we put them in specific places where we can track them, we can follow them, we can talk about them in an easy way. And so we're going to walk through that process with you. Again, I also, I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, recognize Dave Bracken and the Public Works Engineering Crew, Nisha and Kelly, with the capital improvements project and all the work that they do. From our last meeting, it's clearly the centerpiece of where we're going over the next 20 years. We have to understand what our infrastructure is, what it costs, how we're going to replace it, and how we're going to prioritize it. I think we heard the council loud and clear last meeting, and they are tasked to do that. And again, I just want to really thank George, he's not here, but for the thoughtfulness. You know, you do something for 40 years, and you have a, you have someone like me that comes in and, and maybe changes things. It changes hard for someone that has done something the right way and really awesome over these years, and I'm very sensitive to that. He's been great. He's hit the ground running, and he's really helped us with this transition, and so I really want to thank him for that. And lastly, I want to thank the Town Council Finance Committee of Mayor Diane First and Councilmember James Andrews. Without you and your input and support and guidance, I don't think we'd be here right now. And so thank you for spending all the extra time of those phone calls and meetings that we've had over the months, to really position us to present you with this, this budget. So today, what, what we're basically going to try to do is provide with, again, Daria, Dave, and myself, we're going to provide you an overview of, of the budget, the operating budget and our other funds, and then we're going to talk about the capital improvements project budget, and also the sanitary district. And we're all going to talk about it in a single item here. It's all attached to this report, and so we'll walk you through that. And then you have a series of decisions to make with that, and so you have three resolutions. One would be to approve the operating budget. The second is to approve the capital improvements budget, and the third will be, we'll convene to the sanitary district and approve that operating and capital improvements budget. And so with that, if, to make things simple, to walk through and talk about each, each of those items individually in the presentation, and to get feedback, and make any changes that the council would like to make, and hear from the community on each of those subjects, and then again, go into the action items or the resolutions, if that works for you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
Okay. And again, I'm going to turn this over to our Finance Director, Daria Carrillo, and then I'm going to jump back in there and touch on six points after that of just discussions that we've talked about. I want to actually point you to specific budget pages and highlight those for you. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Daria.
Thank you. I believe you all have a copy of the budget book, and you'll notice that it's a little bit different, as, as the Town Manager mentioned, from the previous budgets that you've seen. For one thing, this is a one-year budget. In the past, I think you've been given two-year budgets, but this is a one-year budget. And the budget book is divided into four parts. The General Fund is first, then the Capital Budget, the Other Funds for the Town, and then at the end is the Sanitary District. And the General Fund and the Other Funds sections comprise what in the past has been presented as the Town's operating budget. And on page nine of the book that you have, the budget document, the Town's funds are all listed there, the, the Capital Funds, as well as the General Fund, and the Other Funds. So that's just a summary of all of, all of the funds that the Town has on its books. On the Town's financial statements, some of the funds are combined, but they're segregated on the Town's books for reporting and tracking purposes. And so what's listed as the General Fund is the Town's primary fund for recording and financing the daily operations and the long-term operations of the Town. So as you will notice on page nine, the General Fund's projected ending fund balance for the coming year 2017-18 is nearly $2 million. In previous budget documents, and on the financial statements, I believe, that balance of the General Fund also included in that General Fund balance were the Corder Madera Sales Tax Override Fund, the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, the Recreation Capital Trust Fund, and the AB1600 Developer Fees Fund. And the auditors also determined in the last financial audit that the Park Madera Center Fund should be included. So if you were to add together all of those funds that I just listed, the balance is approximately $6 million. So as I just mentioned, the General Fund is the Town's primary fund for recording the daily and long-term operations of the Town, and all of the other funds have a description that begins on page 10. So the first fund I'll begin with is the General Fund, and on page 13, you will see an income statement which shows the General Fund's revenues and expenditures by type. And as was just mentioned, that some of the changes have been made to previous years. For example, I've pulled out retirement, PERS retirement, both the normal cost and the unfunded liability portions, and showed them on their own line items, and I've shown retiree benefits, as well as the, the pre-funding of the OPEB trust, also on its own item, so that those items can be easily identified. So you'll notice that the ending balance is estimated to increase by nearly $2.4 million, but I just want to point out that 1 point million, 1.8 million dollars of that increase is, is shown as a transfer to the General Fund from the Capital Equipment Fund. So that's just moving from one fund to another. And the reason for that is that the, the Capital Equipment Fund was analyzed, and the items that were listed as part of the reserve were determined either to be for flood control and should be purchased from other funds, or in fact did not need to be purchased for one reason or another. So for that reason, it was not necessary to have such a large reserve in the Capital Equipment Replacement, so that's why that transfer took place. So not including that 1.8 million dollar transfer, the General Fund revenue exceeds the General Fund expenditures and transfers by about $521,000. And again, not including that transfer in, the revenues are estimated to increase by about $634,000 in the coming year, as compared to the 2016-17 budget. And the increase is due mainly to property tax increases, which are, are going to increase about 4% according to the County of Marin, and to sales tax. And those are the General Fund's largest sources of revenue. And all of the revenue types in detail, the sort of revenue that is coming in, are listed on page, pages 14 and 15, and then all the definitions for each of the revenues are described beginning on page 17. So you'll also notice that there was a large increase of more than $1 million of General Fund expenditures and transfers out, but most of that is due to the change in the way the budget's being presented. For example, there were some sewer district costs for personnel that were previously charged to the sewer district, and now they're being charged to the General Fund, so it's showing as an increase in expenditures. But it's also shown, there's offsetting revenue, if you look on page 15, there's a line item that says sewer district, and so there's really no impact to the ending balance for that, because the, the Sewer Fund is going to reimburse the General Fund. Also, Recreation Fund expenditures related to administrative salaries and overhead is now being included in the General Fund budget, whereas it had not been included before. Just at the end of the year, it was closed out and a transfer was made. And those expenditures total approximately $395,000. You can see the combination of those two items account for a large part of the increase. So you'll, again, still on that same page, page 13, you'll notice that salaries are increasing about $363,000, and this includes all negotiated salary increases to all employee groups, step increases, the addition of a customer service representative for the Administrative Department, the addition of a Finance Director for a transitional period of the year, the Recreation salaries that I, I mentioned as part of that 395,000, are 245,000, that's the, the salaries alone. A Public Works Director position is, is included for the entire year, and of course, the sewer district salaries that I just mentioned. There were also savings of nearly $300,000 attributed to the Planned Fire JPA, and that's helping to offset that increase. You'll also notice that retirement in total, PERS retirement costs, have increased by $162,700, and that includes the fact that the fire side fund had been paid off, but that, that payment, that previous payment that will no longer need to be made to PERS of $366,600 will be instead deposited in the new trust that's discussed in the Town Manager's Letter and the, and the staff report. Retiree benefits have increased by $59,000, and that's the amount that is, is derived from the actuarial report that is required every two years, and was performed by an actuary. The police contract has increased by $202,000, and that includes a one-time $95,000 payment into a reserve fund, and also a one-time payment for insurance for the police department. And then there were various other increases, including $15,000 for the Neighborhood Response Group, which is disaster preparedness, and that will be reimbursed by the Central Marin Police Department. As we get into the individual departments, you'll see that there's an additional $35,000 for code enforcement services, and $56,000 in contract engineering personnel. And all the various types of expenditures and what they mean are discussed beginning on page 21, pages 21 to 23. So those same expenditures that were just shown on, on page 13 are also shown on page 16, but this time they're by department. So it's all those same, it's the same numbers, but it's just divided up differently. Rather than by type of expenditure, it's by each department. And there are narratives for the various departments, and more detail of every expenditure by the departments, that begins on page 24. And there are various operational changes that are discussed in the Town Manager's Letter and the staff report. Some of the changes include the changes to the Finance and Administrative Departments that I mentioned, the sharing of fire services, and the proposed JPA, changes to Maintenance and Operations, which have resulted in savings, and also Recreation and Sewer Charges that I mentioned, and the PERS Trust was added as well, the PERS Trust Fund. So because of the reorganization of so many expenditures, particularly the 1.3 million dollars in PERS unfunded liability, that's been moved from each individual department, was spread out in many places throughout the budget. I've just put it all in a department called Non-Departmental, which are things that cannot really be attributed to any one department.
Mind if I interrupt?
Yes.
Do you know offhand which page that one is?
Yes, I will find it for you.
Because that might answer a couple of questions.
Yes.
That is...
That begins on page 42. It's page 42 and 43.
Thank you.
And so the, the I...
Do you mind if I just ask two questions about this?
Yes, yes, yes.
So we have the pre-funding OPEB, and I see that here.
Yes.
Great. And then there's the PERS, great, the Pension Trust. So if I look at the, the one we just had up, page 13, the kind of overall for General Fund, I'm trying to figure out where that PERS Safety 115 Pension Trust rolls up to.
That's included in the line that says retirement unfunded liability. If you add up those two lines, the 976 and then the 366, that's that.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Do you mind if I ask a question about that?
Is, is it okay that we interject with the...
Yes, please.
Okay, so that, that's, that was exactly the question that I was going to ask, but can you just go a little deeper with me? I don't understand, this is just my ignorance, hopefully you can cure here. Why are we suddenly now allocating close to $1 million for unfunded liability for retirement that we've never done before? This is sort of a systemic change in the way we're going to pay this off, or whatever? Why is that?
We had...
We used to do it, but what, it was spread.
Can we let Daria answer, please?
Um, we had been, it's not that it's increased by nearly $1 million, it has, there has been an increase, but it was spread out amongst all the departments before. There really was no department called Non-Departmental. When I created this document, I just thought, rather than splitting up all these things in little pieces where nobody could follow, well, not nobody, but it was just difficult to follow, that I would put them here. So the 976, last year, the, the total unfunded liability was, if you look on page 13, was about 1.1 million, and now it's about 1.3 million. It's on page 13. It's on page 13, under expenditures.
Okay.
Right there.
Yes.
You see right there?
Yep.
So it has gone up a little bit due to the, I mean, actually, it's gone down because the safety side fund was paid off, but taking that savings and putting it into the trust, we're actually paying that into that. So it's not that we, that the town never paid that, it's just that the way it was presented before it was split up and, you know, across many departments and funds. And my intention of putting it all together was so it could be easily tracked.
In a little bit more specific where we would put it, you would see it in each of the respective departments. And so, you know, you would have 100,000 under public works and 300,000 under FIRE. And so we, we thought it was important to put it in one specific place so we can track that and speak to it.
But the aggregate increase in our proposed budget from last year's budget or the actual budget, aside from the different way that you are describing it in your chart, is, has there been an increase in the amount that we're paying towards the unfunded liability for retirement?
Yeah, altogether, it's 162,000.
Okay. And then, okay, so that's, the only difference is about 162,000?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And if you wanted to, you could look, like, just as an example, on page 39, you would see, this is maintenance and field operations, you would see for the current year, they had $114,000 estimated to be spent on unfunded liability. And then for 1718, they have zero, because it's all now on that other page.
So that's, and maybe this is really good work by Jim and Diane or somebody, but we, I, or you, Daria, but I frequently receive the question, how much do we pay in retirement? And I don't think I've ever seen that answer before. So I appreciate the clarity with which you present that. And then the, the PERS trust, this is a new thing, or this is just, again, being allocated out?
Yeah, that's part of, part of the increase, the 162 includes that 366. That 366 represents the amount that the town had previously been paying towards the side, the PERS side fund for safety.
Right.
So that's paid off, the safety portion is paid off. And so instead of just taking the savings and, you know, doing something else with it, and then later when the PERS discount rate dropped, you know, being faced, you know, maybe with a very large payment, the town made the decision to put it in this new trust, you know, so that it could accommodate the changes in the discount rate without a big impact to the town's cash.
Okay. So the, go ahead, that's, answer my questions, thank you.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I'd like to, for the benefit of the people who are here or watching from home, hopefully the whole Centennial Committee, I would like to expand on what you just said. Years ago, CalPERS required that Corte Madera pool with many other small communities into these pension pools. And when that happened, they insisted we pay up to meet some, you know, threshold number that they wanted us to be at. So for many years, we have been paying extra amounts into this CalPERS side fund to make up that amount that they required of us. We have paid off one of the two side funds. The other one is due to be paid off fairly soon, in two years. Because we have been accustomed to paying this side fund, we thought, well, instead of not paying that anymore, let's put that money that we are accustomed to paying for that first side fund that we just paid off into a trust to only be used for unfunded pension liabilities, but we control it, it's not controlled by CalPERS, so we have a little bit more flexibility. We discussed this a few months ago in a council meeting where Bartell and Associates made a presentation. So if anybody really wants to get into the nitty gritty, you can watch that video. There's lots of charts, it's great. We also did something very similar with OPEB, other post-employment benefits. We have set up a trust, and we are putting money into that to start whittling away at our unfunded liability. So these are ways in which we're trying to tackle it without incurring additional expenses, say with a pension obligation bond or some other way. So thank you for that. I know that is a big issue, a lot of people are interested in, so I felt the need to say that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So before I turn it back over to Todd, I'll just say that the bottom line for the general fund is that the revenues do exceed the expenditures by over $500,000, and that the ending balance is in excess of 10% of general fund expenditures and transfers out, it's about 11%, 10% is the policy set by the council. And there's no longer any sort of, it was called an internal deficit that was on the books, that because of the various funds, so that doesn't exist anymore. So before I move on to the other funds, I think that the town manager wanted to make some remarks.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just want to touch on a few highlights in my budget overview that I think are important. And I guess I'll start with the CalPERS retirement program and OPEB discussion we just had, because another important point is that I think, and I credit the mayor and council member Andrews for this, because really, and this is what our pension reform folks have been sharing with at the county level, of the discount rate. And as we all know, CalPERS right now is at a 7.5% discount rate. It's moving from 7.5% to 7% over the next three years. And what that'll do with those projections, as we talked about, where in 1516 it was 965,000, and two years later it's 1.3, well, that trend is going to continue at an even steeper pace. So the question began with our internal group of what should the discount rate be? And when we did the pension analysis, we actually challenged Bartell with that to say, we want to start our conversation with that. What should, what is it going to be? Where is CalPERS ultimately going to land at a discount rate? And they said 6%. That's where it's trending. So what we started to do then is do an analysis because we knew our two side fund payments at 365, 365,000 and about 266,000 for the miscellaneous in two years, they would be paid off. And again, I give George Warmen credit for that, not to do anything cute and to pay it as we went in the council for making that decision, because they positioned us for this moment. And basically, when you look at the difference annually for us of what 7.5% is all the way to 6, is actually almost those two side fund payments. So in two years, the point is, we as Corte Madera will be able to fund in this trust the difference of 7.5% to 6. We will be theoretically funding our retirement at a 6% discount rate, which we should be doing. And I think that's really important to note, and really, you know, I'm really, I think we are positioned now to start speaking and to control the cost moving forward, because what it'll do is, as they go from 7.5% to 7, and if they go down to 6.5% to 6, right now, we pay 38% of our payroll goes to retirement cost. There are some studies out there, that analysis out there, that says it could go as high as 61%. And what would that do for our, it would double our numbers almost. And so we will be able to control that between 38% and 42% over the next 20 years, just with what we're doing right here. And so that's, that's really important to note. And so I think that's a highlight also that I wanted to point out. The other thing is with the OPEB, again, we began prefunding it a couple of years ago. The grand jury recently did a study and analysis on that, and I think one point that they didn't really focus on was when they looked at the amortization of what cities and towns in the county were doing to pay this down. As you may recall, in 2016, our unfunded liability was about 12 million. We lowered it by over $2 million in the course of a few years, from 2012 to 2016. It's now at 9 million. And we have 2 million prefunded in a trust account. The difference between us and nine other entities in the county is that we didn't amortize it over 30 years. What we did is we amortized it over 16. So in 16 years now, actually it was 17 at the time, in 15 years now, we will be fully funded if we continue at the current rates. And so it's another point that I really think we should point out for the community. Something I want to point out is the FIRE department, and we've talked about it, we've now really studied the analysis from a labor standpoint, not a redundancy within our line items. That is what is coming next with our ad hoc committee and our working group as we continue to, this conversation with the FIRE potential consolidation. But we've done a full analysis now, going back to 1516 and projecting out of what are potential labor cost savings in a consolidation. And so in my, in my report on page two, at the bottom, and you can also kind of see a trend as well, let's see, what page is that, Daria? 13? We have this, the fire ones?
All of the funds are on page nine, is that what you were looking at?
Where they have the departments.
Oh, the departments, I think, are on page, let's see, 16, 16, page 16.
Sorry, guys, technologies, giving George a hard time, and I need to... Okay. You can kind of see the trend here on FIRE, where in 1516, the FIRE budget was 5.5 million. 1617, it dropped, actually, it was, it was revised, 1617 was projected at 5.3, but we actually landed at 5.1. And that has to do with some of our shared cost savings, and then you see it drop to 4.1. Part of that is we pulled the unfunded liability cost out. But what I will point it on on page two, what I did is I did an apples-to-apples comparison of just our employees and what salary benefit costs were in 1516. And again, it's pointed out here. So in 1516, just our payroll, our retirement, retiree health cost, labor cost was 4.4 million. In 1617, we began sharing services and really started to merge our operations this last fiscal year. And again, we lowered the labor cost to 3.9 million dollars. So we, we saved just under $500,000 in that one year of sharing. In 1718, we actually project those costs to lower to 3.5 million dollars. So if you look at this, we really took $900,000 of apples-to-apples cost off the books and with a, with a consolidation. We don't have less firefighters or paramedics out in the streets, we actually have more. We're able to streamline and flatten the organization at the top with sharing chiefs and battalion chiefs, and we actually have, we are going to have more firefighters, paramedics on this. For Corte Madera, it's $900,000, there's a variety of reasons for that, but that is where we're at. Something else I want to point out is, you're just comparing year to year, so that's a $900,000 savings, but what you have to think, take into consideration, if you do a 20-year trend of labor costs for FIRE, they go up in labor costs 3% to 5% any given year, so you can add 3% to 5% to each of those numbers, and, you know, you could argue a savings of over a million dollars. Something else that'd allow us to do is, we just came to a tentative, just a verbal acknowledgement, and we're going to approach CalPERS with that, that we, it is our intent to current classic employees for FIRE that have 3% at 50, the formula, it's the enhanced retirement formula, they are going to reform moving forward to 3% at 55. And so that is important for controlling these future labor costs. The other thing that I want to point out for all of our employees, and it is on page... Page five. Page five in the middle, something else I want to point out, because there's, you have unfunded liability cost, and then you have, that's our unfunded liabilities, that's for our retirees, those are the projected costs that we have to fill that, that hole to fully fund our retirements. But you also have normal cost. Normal cost are payroll, normal cost are for our current employees. So those are part, that is part of, you know, it's in payroll and you pay a percentage. For miscellaneous, the employer pays 10.5% of their salary towards the normal cost. For FIRE, we pay 21%. So in the pension reform of 2013, something that, that they passed was that we could, as a town, force our employees to pay 3% towards that 21% of normal cost. And what I wanted to point out, and I'm sorry, and part of that, it was 3%, but also the 9% of the employer's share. So you could force a firefighter in Corte Madera to pay 12% towards the 21% of normal cost. That's law, you could do that. I'll tell you that half of the agencies in the county do that right now. For miscellaneous, you could only require them to pay 8% of the 10.5% normal cost. So on page five, I just want to...
Rebecca, could you see, is that what that noise is in the back? Is that what it is? Do you hear that?
Yeah.
It's distracting, I'm sorry, I was...
Yeah, it is.
Keep going, Todd.
So what I want to point out on page five, because I think it's, it's something that we touched on the pension reform analysis, but it's something that gets lost, and it's the vision of the council and our labor groups. If you look at page five, because it goes to this big picture conversation, you have to control those normal costs, because they're only going to go up. And so the goal is for our employees to pay half of the normal cost of retirement, right? And my point is that our employees now pay 18% of CalPERS cost, when really, by law, you could mandate 12. They actually pay 6% more than any other city or town in Marin County. The Corte Madera employees are the only ones that do that. And again, when you look at the miscellaneous side here, you can only mandate 8%. Our employees pay 13.5. The SCIU or our public works employees, they pay 12.5. And again, it just has to do when the contracts were negotiated. And I just, I just wanted to point that out to the council.
Todd, may I ask you a quick question? Are we anticipating that after the consolidation, the firefighters will still be at 18%?
So that's what we're talking about now. So we're talking about a couple of different items. For instance, Larkspur pays 11%. So one of the conversations to really do an apples-to-apples MOU is we are contemplating moving it down to 15% or 16% of normal cost. But something important to point out is if we reform from 50 to 55, the normal costs are not 21, 22%. They drop down to 17, 18%. So it is almost, you'll see a savings there as well. So there's a potential that, yes, you'll see it drop a couple of percentage points, but then again, our normal costs will also lower.
Great, thank you.
Yes. And I'm sorry if I, hopefully I explained that in a simple way, but I think it's important to point out, because this is a complicated issue, and there are five important things that you really have to do to, to start to manage some of these things. And I think we've done a pretty good job. Okay, just two other, a couple of things I want to point out. On page 90 and 92, I just wanted to point out, now we are part of the Bay Cities Risk Pool. For years, we were self-insured. I wanted just to show you now that you will see, moving forward, a specific insurance fund on page 92, it lists our revenue and expenditure summary. And I just want to point out, again, we talked about, we did lower our self-insured retention limits, we improved our insurance coverage, and we lowered our premium cost. And my point here to show you this, is if you compare 1617 to 1718, we lowered our premium cost from about 500,000 to 440,000. And I just wanted to point that out to you. We talked about retirement and OPEB. We're going to talk about it at the next, but I want to point out just how we have it set up on page 70, 71, it's the sales tax override. And I want to thank Daria and David for this. I think as we move forward, it's important to identify all of our taxes and identify and have them in a simpler way to understand, to see it, to ask questions, to have it on our website, and to communicate moving forward of what our long-term plan is to solve some of our issues. And I think most importantly, it's important that our community knows that we're spending the money right, and how we're spending it. And in working with the Oversight Committee for the sales tax, really, again, the community identified six areas where they would like to see these money spent, they're listed on page 70. And on 71, there's, there's an explanation of the expenditures that really correlate into the capital improvements plan that we'll talk about in a little bit. Well, one important thing I wanted to point out, on page 70, you'll see the line item for senior and youth programs. And in 1617, we budgeted $182,000. And then when you look at the 1617 estimated actuals, you know, we haven't closed the books yet. And my point is that we're not going to spend 182,000, it's estimated to be approximately 100,000. Something I want to point out is that this was actually, the 100,000 was for equipment. It was for mowers, it was for equipment to manage the landscaping and infrastructure to support our youth programs and our fields. They weren't actually for senior and youth programs, they were to support the fields that our programs are held on. And it's within the meaning of the, it fits the sales tax, but I want to point that out, because then when you look to the next line item of 1718, you see a, you see a budget item of 37,000. Well, 30,000 of that is for senior programs specifically. And there were some comments early on with the Oversight Committee and concerns, and I'm sorry I wasn't at that meeting, I was at another one, but you can't compare the previous year. We've never actually budgeted for senior programs in the history of the sales tax, and moving forward, we are. And my point is that, really, I look at this budget as a three-step process. You know, the money, everything doesn't have to be decided before the budget is approved. I look at it as a three-step process, and so the first thing is, $30,000 is budgeted and recommended. and recommended by staff for a senior coordinator, for someone to work with our age-friendly team, to work with Mario and his team and staff, and our Parks and Rec Commission, to identify what types of programs do we want to do this fiscal year, and identify those, and come back to council, if it takes a month, it's a month, if it takes three months, it'll be three months from now, but it's this fiscal year, to come back to council and share that. And here is our vision as a group of where we want this to go, and then we would ask for additional expenditures of the sales tax override monies. The third part, the next step of this, and it's the third step, would be now that we have identified the programs that we want, do we have the facilities to hold them? And so looking at the community center and other facilities, what types of things can we do immediately within this fiscal year, and working with Dave and his team, to see if we can, you know, do something to the community center, or change, make minor renovations to it at an affordable price to hold these programs. So really, this is a three-step process for the council. The first is 30,000 for the coordinator, the second will be to come back to you and identify programs with our age-friendly team and our staff and the commission, and the third one would be like, okay, now that we have the programs in place and the coordinator, what types of things can we do with the facility moving forward? So I just wanted to point that out, and it would be easy to throw 150,000 at this and say, look what we're doing, but I want it to be methodical and thoughtful, and a thoughtful conversation over a period of months, and so I wanted to point that out. The next thing, and the Howards are here, and I'm just really appreciative of their effort and their support for us in disaster preparedness, they are taking the lead as the coordinator moving forward for Corder Madera and Larkspur. Disaster preparedness funding is in two areas in our budget. The first is here on this line item, 20,000 is for disaster preparedness. That 20,000 actually has not been identified of how we're going to spend it. I have an idea of where it's going to go, and I think the Howards do, but I want them to do some work and the team, and to come back, and I want council to allow a flexibility with staff to approve this 20,000 expenditure, and allow us to expend those monies as goes as our disaster groups come up with some of the great work and ideas that they are this year. The other thing, the other area is within the fire budget, it's on page... It's on page thirty. Page thirty of the budget, you'll see a line item, it's 43,600, and so it's broken up in a few areas. The first, the 28,500, some of that is for CERT training and education, to support our CERT programs, but 12,000 to 15,000 of that is specifically to support the Howards and their mission of overseeing our programs and the work they're going to do. We also have additional monies of 8,600 and 6,500 to support disaster preparedness. It's open-ended, it allows us flexibility if we want to outfit households, new neighborhoods, with supplies and programs, training, we have the capability. So if you add the 43,000 here, and the 20,000, we have over 63,000 budgeted for disaster preparedness. It would be easy to put that all into the sales tax override, but I think staff has been sensitive to that, and I think it's appropriate to budget it this way, and the mission that we're trying to accomplish. And so I really wanted to point out that, again, we're budgeting 63,000, and looking back at prior years, I don't think we've ever budgeted that much in the past, and I think this is something that is sustainable moving forward as we go. And then with that, I am going to stop, unless you have any questions, and move into the capital improvements program, and we also have our engineering staff. What we asked them to do, we can handle this-
Do you mind if we take questions real quick?
Sure.
Okay, any questions on this part of the budget?
No, it was, that was great.
Sure was, yeah.
Okay. I thought it was really great, too, and thank you, Daria, the format is terrific. I know this wasn't easy. George has, I mean, Todd, you kind of described it very well, an amazing head filled with 40 years of our town's history, and, you know, in the past, whenever we've asked him a question, he's always known everything, but I know it wasn't an easy process to translate it over, so thank you, you did a good job. Okay, capital budget?
I'm sorry, actually, we just have the other funds really quickly.
If you don't mind if we skip to the other funds, because they're part of the operating budget as well, they begin on page eighty-four, and a lot of it has already been mentioned. I talked about the capital equipment fund, which is on page eighty-eight. That was where a lot of equipment reserve was, and it was determined that we didn't need all of that, so that large transfer of 1.8 million was transferred to the general fund, and there's still nearly 2.6 million in that fund. The insurance fund, Todd already went over as well, so I just won't repeat any of that, except just, I'll just say one thing, that the ending balance is showing an ending balance that is a negative balance, that's on page ninety-one, but that includes future claims. The actual cash in that fund is in excess of 400,000. And then Park Madera Center, which is on page ninety-three, you'll notice that there is a deficit, it's also a negative ending balance in that fund. And what that represents is the accumulated amount that the general fund has expended on Park Madera Center since it was purchased in 2006, and you'll notice that in this coming year, the deficit is actually being reduced because the revenue is actually in excess of the expenditures, so it looks-
Daria, can you just, can you start over, because that was, I just wanted to capture that again, sorry.
Yes.
Just do the Park Madera again.
Okay, the Park Madera Center Fund is where the town is keeping track-
Right.
-of the accumulated amount that the general fund has had to spend on Park Madera Center, the amount that is short from the revenue that's collected from the rent as compared to the amount that has to be paid out for debt service. So over all these years, since 2006, when it was purchased, accumulated a deficit of, you know, about 2 million. And I was just pointing out that in the coming year, the revenues are expected to exceed the expenditures, and so the deficit will decrease. It looks like it's, you know, slowly being reduced.
I think it's a first.
Yeah, it's slowly being-
Right, am I getting that wrong?
We're at break even.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, I've been on the planning commission, I don't think that's happened before, has it?
No.
So who do we thank for that? Michael, somebody, that was-
Let's credit George on that one.
Okay, George.
George refunded it.
Because it was projected to not be as good this soon.
The refunding-
The refinancing.
The refinancing expedited that about five to seven years, as well as the lease agreements that are now coming up, are, have closed the gap, and this trend will continue.
Thank you, Daria.
Can I ask about the 8,400 and transferring from the general fund?
Yes.
What's that for?
Do you want me to answer it? Okay. That is George's estimate of the amount that'll be transferred in the next year. I think it was just sort of a placeholder, just in case.
He's used to spending money from general funds.
Just in case it was needed.
It's an anticipated subsidy.
Right, just in case it's not as good as people think, yes. So that's Park Madera Center. And then on page ninety-seven, that's the recreation fund, and the next several pages show the recreation fund and its various components and programs. And as I did mention earlier, the expenditures for administrative salaries and overhead have been transferred to the general fund, and the expenditures do show in excess of revenues by about 150,000, 149,000, but the fee structure is being evaluated by the Parks and Recreation Commission, so we hope to be able to revise this. So those are the other funds.
May I ask you a quick question about that, and Todd, maybe this is more a policy question. Are you, is the goal going to be to have the two lines on page ninety-seven, the revenues from the recreation fund and the expenditures essentially match, excluding staff salaries?
That's correct. What we did is, from our conversation that we had with council a few months back, if you go to page 100, and you look at, I'm sorry, is that the right one? Is that where we pulled up? That's right.
Is it 99?
Or you want the recreation-
Dan, can you say that again, so I understand what you mean?
Okay, we had a discussion a few months ago about the, having the recreational fees kind of cover the expenses, and, you know, we want it to be somewhat cost-neutral, and I just was clarifying that these would be the numbers we'd be looking at in the chart on page ninety-seven, and these are excluding the actual staff costs, which we will pay out of the general fund. So the recreation fund has revenue from fees for service program, fees, things like that, use of the property. The expenditures are recreation center, outdoor facilities, some are, you know, all those kinds of programs.
So, thank you, Madam, so on, what we did is, historically, our park and rec budget, just for staffing, everything that we do, all of our programs, has been about 1.3 to 1.5 million over the last three years. Revenues that we bring in from our programs and fees is approximately 800,000, so we had a gap the last couple of years, if you take revenue to expenditures of, you know, it was pretty significant, so it was about 600, 700,000. So we had a conversation philosophically of what should we do, what programs should we subsidize are appropriate for like daycare, for people that live in our community or work in our community, or the playgrounds, the summer programs, what should we do? And so what we did is, if you go to page 54 really quickly, what we tried to do is we said, okay, we believe in park and recreation and the support our community, and so we pulled out the salary benefit cost, and the janitorial services, and all the maintenance costs that we have over in park and rec. And so on page 54, it's about 394,000, and so we pulled those costs out of the overall budget and said, that is something we are going to subsidize, and that should be a general fund expenditure as a starting point. So it's Mario, it's Brian, and then again, it's all of the cost for phones and utilities. And so we pulled that out, that's the general fund expenditure. As the mayor pointed out, when you look at page ninety-seven, the goal now, when you remove that, again, we bring in about 821,000 in anticipated revenue, and we have 970,000 in expenditures, so we still have 150,000 gap. The goal is to zero that out. Now, is that possible? I don't know, but what we've done, I have met, Mario and I and Brian have met with the Park and Rec Commission, they formed a subcommittee to evaluate facilities and programs, like we talked about with the senior coordinator and programs, and to evaluate this whole thing, and just to look at what types of programs should we run, what should our cost recovery fee schedule be, and what types of things should we subsidize? And so they anticipate to come back to us and council in the next two months. So this is a starting point for the budget, but with the goal to try to close this gap over the course of the next year. And again, if it's, I don't know if it's realistic, but I'm excited about the work that the commission is doing, and they're really empowered to do that work and to come back with some good ideas for us, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Questions over here?
Nope.
So are we about to move on to capital budget? Would it be all right if we took some questions and comments from the public on this? Would any member of the public like to talk about this portion of the budget we've just reviewed, and this is the town operating budget? Just so you know, after this, we'll be discussing the capital budget, and then after that, the sewer budget. Yes, ma'am, would you please state your name?
Can you give me just a second to pull up my notes before you start the clock? So, hi, Pat Ravazio, 427 Oakdale, since Bob has to listen to me, I figure that it's only fair that the rest of you have to as well. This is something I know he agrees with me on, and that is that there's a real serious health problem in the Twin Cities, our number one health problem by far is teenagers drinking and doing drugs, and I don't think our Parks and Recreation Department does enough for them, and we, I think we do, no offense to the seniors, but I think we do a lot for the seniors, and I really would like to see those priorities reevaluated. Having raised three teenagers in Marin County, it is a minefield out there, and I really think that if there were fun activities that were social, that teenagers could engage in during the days, especially on weekends, especially in the summertime, when they're gathering in parking lots to hang out so they can see each other, maybe laser tag and scavenger hunts and things, I know it's harder, it's higher-hanging fruit for Parks and Rec, and that's why we have to go after it. The teens aren't here asking for those programs, but we parents know that we could be doing a lot more. It's a number one health problem in all of Marin, and I would just, and I'd volunteer, and I have been volunteering, saying, hey, I'll get involved, so, I know Mario's not here tonight, and I know he felt, Mario feels the same way, he just feels really strapped that he doesn't have the resources, so I'd like to suggest that instead of hiring that senior coordinator, we hire a special teen coordinator to address our serious youth health problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Robinson, 25 Ash Avenue, Corder Madera. This may be a more capital item to question, but it came up, Daria mentioned there was going to be funds transferred from the sewer fund to the general fund. I guess my question may be directed to the Public Works Director or the Town Manager, is whether or not that transfer of funds from the sewer fund to the general fund will have any impact on any planned projects or any future projects, if I understood Daria's initial comments. Also, I wanted to compliment our new Town Manager, our new Finance Director for the budget, I got a copy this morning, and I actually understood everything I read, appreciate their input tonight. I also want to thank our Town Manager for the addition of our new code enforcement contract person, I understand that that person is in our budget, and I had a chance to communicate with her, and I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but our main entrance, for me anyway, coming to Marin Gardens off the freeway, has been basically a parking lot for, I got junk trucks for hire that have used our entrance there for the storage of their vehicles, and we've had a sort of hit and miss with Centralman Police and a complainant from Madera Gardens, won't mention his name, and they've gone out and tagged the vehicles, but in the past few months, that situation has been eliminated totally, and I think that's money well spent, and I'm sure that Pam can be involved in other projects in the town that will improve the appearance of our town. Under the operational portion of the budget, one of the goals indicated by Centralman Police is to have an increase in visibility of police patrol, and I support that goal and will hope to, again, see police patrols in Madera Gardens. One last operational item, and I did attend the last consolidation meeting, and I don't believe that I understood some of the compelling cost arguments that were presented by our Town Manager tonight, but like anything, when you cut costs or reduce costs, there's also the impacts of that on your operational, I think that people should be aware of, as I understand it, that fire services will no longer be provided by the station at this location for Christmas Tree Hill, Chapman Park, and Madera Gardens. So while we will experience a large amount of savings, we're also going to experience a change in service operations, how that service is provided to us, if I understand that correctly. And I think those are my operational budget comments, and I have some comments on capital budgets when we get to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, we were both at that same meeting, and I think that was maybe a misrepresentation of exactly what the fire chief described. Don't worry, folks, all the fire coverage will be, all the neighborhoods in our town will be adequately covered by fire. Would you like to comment on that, or?
Yeah, I had a long discussion with the chief after this, this has been a discussion we've had for the past year, and I do want to point out that this station, Station 14 right next to us, is the primary station for any consolidation. All four of our stations will remain open, but as, from an operational standpoint, that is our main station, and we actually have more equipment and fire apparatus at that station than we did before, and so, no, we do not have, and I don't know where that came from, but it's a point that I, and it's well-taken, that I think we need to tell that conversation, and when our community has very thoughtful concerns and questions about this, that they do reach out to the Town Manager, or more importantly, the Fire Chief, and come down and walk through the firehouse and see what's at your station, and even do a ride-along and see what we're doing, and ask those important operational questions, because they're good questions. because they're good questions. But that is not a factual, that's not factually what is happening.
Thank you. Patty?
Patty Stolier, Casa Buena Drive. It was stated that the town has spent a lot on senior programs, and I wanted to set the record straight that all of the stuff that age-friendly has done is self-funded. This has all been through donations and grants. And the town has not been, I mean, they've been very gracious and supportive, but we haven't asked for a dime from the town. So, I don't want it to be understood that the town is very supportive of doling out money for senior programs. We have given Corte Madera cachet throughout the whole county and beyond into Sonoma because of the senior, the regard that people perceive that we have for seniors. And I'm very, very proud of that, but I definitely don't want it understood that there's money being poured into it. So, I don't think we have to divide between seniors and youth. The line item on the, on the ballot was for seniors and youth, and there's a lot of money coming in, so we could do both.
Thank you. I will say, I think the town poured a lot of money into the picture frame back there in our back corner. Which is a framed certificate from the World Health Organization declaring Corte Madera an age frie-, uh, age-friendly community, right?
Right.
Age-friendly community. So, thank you very much to Patty and Carla for all your hard work on that. Take a look at the certificate when you get a chance, because that's one of the things that is giving Corte Madera a little cachet around the county.
Can I respond to a couple of those comments? Because I think they're very thoughtful from Pat and Patty, specifically with the, the senior and youth programs. It's a great point, they're not competing with each other. We have funding to support both. And something, to Mario's point, our, our Parks and Rec Director, I think it's exciting for him, and I think it's reinvigorated the commission to say, look, you have an open book. Rebuild this thing from the ground up and provide great programs, and also try to support our youth, come up with ideas. I mean, it's, it wasn't too long ago that we had the skateboard park conversation, and those kids, like, they inspired us, you know? And so, start there. What can you do to, to really enhance? And they have an open book, they have to rebuild this and, and do something and involve our youth and come up with some good programs. So, they are not competing for dollars. And, and my point is, I am, we are not going to just put money into a budget, because we have been criticized in the past of it, just say, we're going to do all these things. And then you get to the end of the year, and what did you accomplish? Well, we did half of them, you know? And, or put money in a budget, a line item, and not have a plan. You know, we're going to have a thoughtful conversation as we go. Senior and youth programs are not competing, and I'm really excited where they're headed, because I think our, our age-friendly group, and, and again, I think the Park and Rec Commission are really excited also to say, God, yeah, we didn't think about this, let's, let's see what we can do with the senior programs. And they're also excited, again, to tap into the additional youth types of programs that we can do. So, I'm excited there. Regarding the sanitary district, do you want to answer that? I mean, basically, go ahead, why don't you?
The approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the sanit-, the sanitary district is paying to the town.
Just maybe turn it a little bit more towards you.
Okay. That money had previously been paid directly to employees, their maintenance people and engineering staff and other staff had, their salaries had been split up among the, the town and the san-, and the sanitation district. And now, instead of doing that, because technically, the sanitary district does not have any employees, so it didn't really seem, you know, that it was right to be charging salaries and benefits there. All of those salaries are going to be charged to the general fund, but, and then it shows in the, in the sanitary district as contract services, because these town employees are performing services, and they will pay the, the general fund. So, there, there isn't really any impact to, to really anything. It's just that rather than paying that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the form of salaries and benefits, now the sanitary district will be paying the town. And the town, although they're incurring those expenses, is receiving the reimbursement from the sanitary district. So, there's really no impact.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so in the past, we would have a certain amount of salary, certain amount of benefits, certain amount of whatever, charged to sewer.
That's right.
Now, we're not doing those individual chargebacks, and instead, we're charging a lump sum.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks. You know, would it be possible to take maybe about a five-minute break, and when we come back, we'll move on to the capital budget? Okay? All right. Five-minute recess, please.
Thank you.
All right, folks, let's start up again. Thank you. Let's move on to the capital budget, please. Public Works Director, David Bracken, nice to see you.
And it's nice to see all of you all. It's not often enough anymore.
I know.
Never thought I would say that. You know, teasing you.
You're doing the capital expenditures.
You know, we're talking about the Park Madera, you know, revenue versus expenditure chart, and, right, it brings back haunted memories, that's all I'm saying. I could comment a lot on that, but I won't. Let me get my glasses on here. So, what I'd like to do is just abbreviate a version of what you heard at our last meeting. And maybe more answer questions if I can, rather than give a presentation, because we did see all of this. And based on that meeting, I just wanted to say, what, you know, what you have attached in your budget, we tried to simplify it and clarify it and make it easier to follow, because there, there was a problem where we were putting our project numbers in and that kind of thing. So, all that went away, but the basic content's still the same. And maybe, let me start off, I really would like to thank Public Works Staff, because, you know, without them, I wouldn't be here. Especially want to commend Nisha Patel, who's sitting right there. I mean, her ability, commitment, drive, and maybe most importantly to me, her attention to detail, because she covers my back a lot. And Nisha, thank you so much. One other thing I did look at after our last meeting was a project priority for these. And I'm going to go through that, and I don't have a detailed project priority, I hope you don't expect that, but I will highlight what staff considers priorities. And, and looking at that, we, we developed a very broad methodology and came up with five different, five different ways to, to say, hey, this is a priority project, or it's not. One of those, and maybe the first of that list would be, if the project's a high risk of health and/or safety, if it's and/or a safety hazard. Number two would be state and/or federal regulations and requirements. ADA is an example of that. Three would be grant funding available and/or secured. Four would be a project that would be needed to maintain current infrastructure. And with that, I'm getting it, we need to do maintenance before we have to do a total reconstruction. Streets are a perfect example of that. When we overlay a street, we, I mean, a street, you know, can vary a lot, but typically, you would overlay a street after it deteriorates for about fifteen years. And it'll, it'll deteriorate a certain amount in fifteen years. It can deteriorate maybe three times that in the next three or four years. So, you want to get it before you go, and it, you know, it's a, it's a curve when you look at deterioration. So, you want to get to it before you have to totally reconstruct the street or the pump station or whatever it is. And number five would be an ongoing project. For instance, we've spent a significant amount of funds already, maybe we've designed the whole thing, that design is shovel-ready, ready to go. If we put that effort into the project, then I'm going to tell you, well, that's a high priority to have in this upcoming fiscal year. So, there are the five categories we looked at. And then, looking at this, let me just see how I want to do this. So, this is the budget summary that you saw the last time. You'll notice what's different is a list of numbers. So, we just took these projects and numbered them one through forty-six. And, yes, thank you to everybody for that. I'll tell you, made my life a whole lot easier. So, that's the difference here. I don't think anything has really changed. There have been, you know, some corrections to funding sources on these projects. They're listed here, I won't get too far into that, because I don't think there were any dramatic changes in that regard. I do want to mention one project, and this is entirely my fault, that didn't get included in this list, and that's in flood control and storm drainage. So, that would be Mariner Cove, you don't have it even listed here, because again, it's my fault for that. Mariner Cove Storm Drainage Improvements Phase Two. We completed Phase One this past fiscal year. We had funds left over that was presented to the council, and staff suggested we take those funds and design an expansion of that project, Phase Two of it. So, that's, that's Mariner Cove fixing the curb ponds, that kind of thing. Council approved that, so we went ahead and designed it. We have the design complete. So, it's another one shovel-ready. What I'm going to suggest here, rather than changing all the numbers, all the totals on this, we'll come back to you at probably the second meeting in July, will it be our first meeting? I think we're canceling the, the first meeting. But we'll come back to you for approval plans and specs, and do a supplemental appropriation at that time. And there'll be two funding sources on that. One would be storm drain tax, and one would be sales tax override, okay? I'm not exactly sure how that's split up, it would be fifty-fifty, but it'd probably be close to that. So, with that, you know, just flip over to the project descriptions. And again, what I'm going to do is just, I'm going to skip to the ones that staff believes is a high priority based on one of those five categories. Now, with that being said, every one of these projects is a priority, and every one of these projects is funded, and every one of them, we expect to, maybe not, and I've said this before, maybe not complete every one of these projects this fiscal year, but at least get, get them rolling. For the most part, complete them, but there's always some that, that for whatever reason, get delayed. And there's probably, every one of these projects, I'm sure there's somebody out there who is going to say, that is the top priority project, even though I don't mention it here. And I understand that. So, again, every project's a priority. We hope to, always hope to get them all completed. It's just a matter of, of how they progress, and sometimes that's, we don't progress based on priority, we progress based on, you know, what, what's available and, and construction season and that kind of thing. So, I'm going to skip right down to emergency drainage repairs, and I'm going to list this as a high priority. And this is maybe, and maybe, I'm sorry, Todd, if we could go back to the budget summary And I'll just, yeah, go right up to the first page, that's good. So, emergency drainage repairs, we have number four in our list. Yeah, we're, we're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars, that's an ongoing project. Do we spend seventy-five? I doubt it. Do we spend thirty thousand? Probably. So, I'm not saying seventy-five thousand is a high priority, but there's going to be some kind of emergency drainage, it will be, we have to do it, high priority, because of health and safety in my list. Corrugating metal pipe replacement in flood control terms is the same thing. We have a lot of these pipes underneath the street. I'm going to list that as a health and safety high priority. And whether we spend seventy-five thousand or twenty-five thousand is, depends on what happens throughout the year. The next would be number eight, in small print there, Golden Hind Storm Drain at Eptide Passage Pump Station. This is the lowest point in Mariner Cove. We've gotten to the point, it's still settling after all these years, after, you know, built in nineteen sixty-five, we were, at that time, the experts' promises would stop settling in, in thirty years, it hasn't. Trust me, I've surveyed it, it has not stopped settling, it's going to continue to settle. It's, we now flood there every winter, every king tide, we flood. And, and this is beyond curving, this is flooding across the street where we have to close the street. It floods across the sidewalk, it floods up to an inch of garage paths, so we really do need to address this. We put a pump station on Golden Hind Decay Passage, which has worked really well near the Cove School. This would be the same type of setup, it would include the pump station and slot drains up along the streets to pick up curving and that kind of thing, in addition, just picking up that tidal flooding. Now, go ahead, the next list on the high priority, which is based on infrastructure, is number ten, Golden Hind Decay Passage Pump Station Modifications. This is to replace two check valves in that pump station. They've, they started leaking, I'm not sure if that's going to cost forty thousand dollars or not, I, I really need to get some consultants to look into that for me. It's, it's unusual that that happened, but again, we have to maintain that pump station, keep it working. So, I will place this under high priority. And then before, I don't have, again, on the list, Mariner Cove Storm Drainage Phase Two, I make that a high priority simply because we have the design and it's ready to go. Moving on to the next page. I'm looking at two lists here, so forgive me. Project number fifteen, Tamil Vista Boulevard Corridor Bike Pedestrian Improvements. I list that as a high priority because, and we have grant funding for that. And that would be to provide a bike and pedestrian path from Golden, I'm sorry, from Tam- on Tamil Vista Boulevard. And again, high priority because we have grant funding, we have eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of grants on that, I believe. Number sixteen, Systematic Safety Analysis Reporting Program. Priority because we have all that seventeen hundred dollars in grants to spend, so we might as well spend it. Feel free to ask questions as I go. The next would be number twenty, Endeavor Cove Slide Repair. We had a slide up there, not a dramatic slide, this past winter. I've budgeted two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that, that was based on a looksee that I, I made with Miller Pacific Engineering. And that's one, without knowing anything more about that, I would say, yes, that's a high priority for health and safety. We did have rocks coming down onto the road, we ought to put a K-Rell up there as temporary protection to the road. Twenty-one, Pedestrian Ramp Improvements Mohawk at Neil Cummins, and maybe somebody in the audience that wants to comment on this, but I would make that a high priority, health and safety and regulation. I mean, that's very inadequate for accessibility reasons, and we do need to upgrade those ramps. Unfortunately, I have a high budget number for that, because we'll probably have to do more than just replace the ramps, probably have to cut, regrade the street fifty feet on either side of those ramps, unfortunately, just based on the way that subdivision was built. They didn't think about accessibility back then. Next priority would be number twenty-two, pavement rehab projects. This is, again, is infrastructure, this is basically overlapping streets, rehabilitation of them. And there, again, we want to do it before they fall apart. Next priority project would be number twenty-five, Paradise at Prince Royal Passage Pedestrian Crossing. We have a grant for that. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Nisha? No, we don't have a grant. But that, that is, we have designed seventy percent complete on that, so we'll call it an ongoing project. And it's not that big a project, it will provide safety improvement, health and safety improvements. The next twenty-six, Paradise Drive Bike Way Extension. Paradise Drive Bikeway Extension. We do have a grant for that. $556,000 grant, which is a great grant, but, you know, the project is going to cost us more than that. Just go to my other list here. And that's westward to Upland Circle. We've talked a lot about that, Marin Country Day School, all of those issues. We need to address it. We needed to address it. We finally did get grant funding. Thank you, Nisha. And, you know, I really think we need to go ahead with that. Number 27. Paradise Drive Sidewalk Replacement. And this, we have grants for. It's also a health and safety issue, but we got a $598,000 grant. And this is providing a safe path to school, basically from the path on San Clemente Drive to Seawell Passage. So that stretch would be on the north side of Paradise Drive.
That's the curve.
Pardon?
The curve, right there.
Right.
The curve.
Right. It's where the Bayside Park Trail ends.
Right.
And it starts around the corner.
Bayside Park Trail, yep. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's right.
That's exactly right.
And that sidewalk definitely needs some help.
Yeah, the sidewalk, and it's, sidewalk means repairs just by itself. But we want to provide an eight-foot path, you know, which is a minimum Class One path. And hopefully, we can do that. There may be some constrictions along that stretch, one being at the, at San Clemente Creek. We have a gate structure there which could constrict that down a little bit, but for the most part, we've got an eight-foot path in there. And then, there's a lot of priorities here. Twenty-eight. Redwood Highway Multi-Use Path. That repaves existing path on Redwood Highway. We have a path there now. We'll repave it, widen it a little bit. And we do have a grant for that, $97,000 grant. And the next priority project would be number 30. Miscellaneous Street Curb Gutter and Sidewalk Repairs. Here, again, this is, this would be at various locations. We have a lot of locations. You may have seen, you know, we put up codes. What we like to do, you know, we got a sidewalk lifting up from a root, whatever, put up codes on it. We like to address these several at once rather than just doing piecemeal. So this would cover that, and I don't, I can't tell you specific locations at this time.
David, is our current project out here on track, by the way?
Our current project out here is on track.
Okay, thank you.
Very much so. There have been, I had, we have had utility conflicts, if I could just address that for a minute. My goal is to have everything totally complete by July 1st. There will be some striping left to be done after the 4th of July, but when that parade goes down that street, it's going to look brand new. All right? Carb and gutter will be done, the slurry seal will be done, half of the striping at least will be done. And the flashing beacons will wait till the striping's completely done because we're realigning crosswalks, and I don't want to get the, put those flashing beacons in there until we have the crosswalk striped and laid out where it will ultimately be.
Is that one in this list?
No, it's not in this list because it'll be done.
Got it.
This current fiscal year. So we're already talking about seven, even though I just said it won't be done by this fiscal year.
It'll be basically done.
It'll be basically done.
Okay.
And from a, from a financial standpoint, it'll be completely done.
Got it.
By the end of this fiscal year. That's, please don't ask me any more.
Good enough.
Questions on that.
Oh, that's an idiot.
Okay, where was I? Miscellaneous Street Repairs.
Number 30.
Yeah, 30. Carb Gutter Sidewalk, we, I mentioned that. High priority for health and safety, where we have these tripping hazards, that kind of thing. Miscellaneous Street Repairs, same thing. I'd list that as a high priority because of health and safety. And that's where all of a sudden something happens, you know, wintertime rains like heck, and we get some deep potholes that take more than just a little bit of attention. And then the Street Slurry Seal Project. I list that as high priority again, just like the paving project, because that's maintenance to keep that street in good shape longer than if we just did nothing. Slurry seals good. They're difficult projects to do. They take a long time to dry. Every time I do them, I think, "I'll never do one again," almost, but they're very good for keeping up the street and extending the life of the street. Yes, sir.
Okay, Tamalpais, we're going to slurry steel?
That's going to be slurry sealed, yes.
Do we want to do it before the parade or let it dry?
No, we'll do it before the parade. It's scheduled, the slurry steel seal is scheduled to start on Monday.
Okay.
Okay?
On Monday?
This coming Monday. Yes.
What about all the other stuff that was going to be done?
It's all getting done. They're doing, I want to, you know, Gelati Brothers has been a joy to work with. I don't want to compare this to any other contractor, but you could look at other towns that have major street projects going on and compare this to that. And I just happen to drive through one other project every day on my way to and from work. And I just, every day I see that other one, I just say, "God bless Gelati Brothers." So Mike, I hope you heard that.
I know which one you're talking about.
You probably do. We're not going to mention anything.
I'm not going to mention it, yeah.
Do they have their signs up and down, Tamalpais?
Their signs are up, don't worry. This is, you know, they've addressed each corner of each intersection individually, which was great, rather than what would have been more efficient for the contractor price-wise? Would be to just block everything, do all of the concrete at once on every corner, all of the patch paving, you know, all the way up and down, and block the whole street or half the street for the entire course of the project, where they went and did each quarter and jackhammered out the concrete, jackhammered out the asphalt, came back, forged the new curb and gutter, poured the concrete, patched the asphalt, and then moved on down to the next intersection. Was outstanding. It really made a difference in, in the effect on residents and traffic. It really did.
Yeah.
I have gotten some complaints, so why do you let them start at seven and that kind of thing? But for the most part, it's been an excellent job.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Sorry to see what we've talked about. Payment Management Plan Update. I list this as a high priority simply because this is something we need to do. It's done every year. You probably remember, all streets in all cities get graded. We get high grades every year, which is great, but we need that, to get grants, we need that. We need to have that updated. I think it's every three years. And moving on, I really only have one other high priority project, and that's Capital Project Development and Review, and that's health and safety. And that's, I hate to use the term, but I'll say it, it's a bit of a slush fund. You know, well, not a slush fund, but it's for, it's to hire consultants that we don't know for what we need them for yet, but it will come up. Get a lot of issues at a corner, at a crosswalk, at traffic lights, not working, whatever. Not that I'll hire a consultant for that one on Paradise and Harbor, but, you know, sometimes we need to get a consultant, and $5,000 here or there for that. So with that, again, my, the way we categorize these priorities were the five categories: high risk of health and safety hazards, state and/or federal regulation requirements, grant funding available and/or secured, maintains current infrastructure, maintenance versus total reconstruction, and the fifth was an ongoing project where we've already expended a significant amount on that particular project. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. This was great. I mean, easy to follow. Two things I think might maybe have been mislabeled.
Yes.
So I wanted to ask about that. On page 56, item number 26, the Paradise Drive Bikeway Extension for this upcoming fiscal year, there's $700,000 budgeted, but was, that's not coming out of the sales tax fund, correct?
Wasn't that the $556,000 grant?
That's westward Upland Circle. We have, well, the grants, $556,000. The total project's 1.4 million, Daria.
If I could just mention, yeah, when I prepared this, I wasn't aware of a couple of the grants that David mentioned, that they had actually been secured. And so at some point, the budget will have to be revised to reflect that. So no, they're not included in this budget.
Right. I'm sure, believe me, these things are going to happen through no fault of your own. Obviously, you were working with what you had at the time. So you think out of the sales tax fund, we only need 100 and something thousand?
Mm-hmm. We have $556,000 grant, so that difference. And we're, you know, that project, I'd have to split over fiscal years.
Okay.
We have 700 and 700. I mean, that's why, there's no way in the world I could get that done, given the, you know, environmental concerns with that, that type of thing. There's no way in the world I could get it completed this coming fiscal year. We're going to definitely be splitting fiscal years. So I just, I mean, it's a 700 and 700.
No, I get it.
That's my guess.
So on page 69, that project is down for 244.
Yeah, well, this could be.
So I'm guessing that's right, and the difference was the grant amount.
Yes.
Okay, good. And then, similar thing with the next item, number 27. You have 128 from the Capital Replacement Fund, which does match what's on page 69, but I think the 472, instead of the sales tax, that's Obeg 2, grant. One Bay Area grant, number two.
Yes.
With the swap that we just voted on on consent calendar.
Yes, that's correct.
Which is from Tam.
Yeah, 598,000.
Great.
But since it's federal, we have to go through the process of the 580,000 between 18 and 19 because they asked to be submitted to the tip.
Okay.
Isn't she great?
Yes, she is.
See, when we, like, I had a question that I gave Daria for the total analysis.
Oh, okay. Would you, Nisha doesn't, you don't have the microphone, so would you mind either coming up here to talk to one of the microphones or maybe if?
Sure, sure.
Let me get her the microphone.
No, I have. I forgot that we have a microphone.
Do you want to pivot that microphone around?
So this is Nisha, one of our senior engineers.
Oh, over there. Okay.
Hi.
Is there a chair? Bring a chair up.
Todd, would you mind pulling it? There you go. Okay.
Try now.
Hello?
Yep.
So, all right. So, yeah, we have, we have 598,000 in grant funds coming to us for project number 27, and that would be budgeted for 1819 because the project still needs to be entered into the tip, and we have to go through the whole federal process to get the authorization for the funds. So what we would need would be 542,000 of sales tax, and we have another swap that we did with the county a few years back, and now they're distributing those funds July 1, and that's 60,000. So we'll get Measure A funds, and that would make a total of, you know, 602 funds, 602,000 in 1718 and 598,000 in 1718. I mean, 1819.
1819.
Yes, and that would be the grant funds. And then the other project that you were referring to, project number 26, that would be Paradise Drive Bikeway Extension from westward to actually Yupa Pondaway, which is the entrance to Marin Country Day School. We have 244,000 of Measure A Safe Routes Funds that we secured in the past. So those can be used at this time, but the federal funds of 312,000, which are PCA funds, that's similar to the 598 CMAC STP funds for the other project where we'll have to enter it and enter the project into the tip and go through the whole federal process to get the authorization for the funds. So that won't be available to us until 1819.
Thank you. An excellent mastery of all those acronyms.
Sure.
Very good. Anybody have any other questions on those particular ones? All right, Jim?
What's going on with project 23, the Casa Buena Complete Streets? Are you doing 250,000? Is that just engineering money?
Dave, do you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, well, actually, we've hired, I'm sorry. We have a consultant, CSW Stubber Stroh, started work on that, the preliminary design work. And, I mean, this is a real good one to, again, get back into, is it a priority or not a priority? Certainly, it's a priority. All of them are priorities because we've started work on it. Three months from now, I would say, yes, it's a priority because we've already expended X dollars on it. So anyhow, we've started design work on that, that just started within this past month. We did have some money budgeted in this fiscal year for that.
Okay. So next year, it could be a design project that might be.
It'll be fully designed this fiscal year. There, again, that's one I doubt we could complete by June 30, 2018, or it'll roll into the construction season. We'll most likely, I would hope, have construction started before the end of this fiscal year, but the construction will certainly roll over that June 30, July 1 point.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Nope. Would any member of the public like to speak to the capital budget?
Patty Stolier, Casa Buena Drive, representing the Safe Sanford Society. We had started petitioning and nicely requesting the town 27 years ago to address the Sanford intersection. I've had letters that I think I resent, but I'd be happy to bring them up again. And I was very disheartened to hear that it was not a priority to do the Sanford and to do the Complete Streets on Casa Buena, so I'm glad that Jim brought that up. But I think it might be either the most densely populated or one of the most densely populated, completely unsafe streets. So I don't see how it's not a priority on health and safety because there's blind hills, no lighting, no sidewalk, and for a 70-year-old woman whose doctor said you need to go for walks, I have to drive somewhere to go for a walk. So I don't see how it's not a health and safety thing. And a couple of years ago, I invited all the council members to walk down Casa Buena with me. Nobody was willing to do it because it's too dangerous. So I, again, extend the invitation to go for a walk with me on my street, and I really do hope you pursue with a little more vigor than the last 27 years, the repair of the intersection and also adding the other. So I think that was it, except, oh, I was going to ask, the 30,000 for the LED countdown, how many signals are we talking about? Thank you.
Hey, Dave, do we have a project number 29 that deals with Tamalpais at Sanford?
Yes, we do. And if I could, you know, I knew this was going to happen when we started talking about priorities, but Patty, God bless you, yes, I do recognize the high priority of both those projects. We have started design on both of those projects and expect to complete them. It's just, maybe, let me say this. If I, if I really said, all the, what, what projects in here are health and If I, if I really said, all the, what, what projects in here are health and safety, I'd probably list every one of them. Okay, so, I had to, you know, draw the line somewhere. But we've started design work on both those projects, and we do expect to complete them. Like I said, it may not be completed by June thirtieth, but, because of construction scheduling, but we will get them done. And I truly think you'll be happy when we do.
And.
With the results.
And Patty's other question was, how many LED countdown pedestrian signals can we get for thirty thousand dollars?
Nisha, do you, do you have a unit price on that? What, was it ten thousand? A little less than that, right?
No, it's a lot less than half.
Yeah, it's maybe six or seven.
That's right, so we're getting approximately seven?
Yes.
This upcoming fiscal year?
Seven or eight.
Yes.
Good, we got a thumbs up from Patty, good. Thank you. Peter, nice to see you.
Hi, good evening, Peter Chase, Montecito. At the Planning Commission meetings, there was, represented a map of Paradise Drive with various projects, and with this, it adds to the picture of what's gonna happen on Paradise, even though it's not entirely clear, you know, exactly what those sidewalks will look like and how continuous it will be. But we're hearing, and we have a lot of very vocal people who I appreciate, and I think they're absolutely right in getting this pathway complete out there. I'm not sure how this all ties together. This is sort of the first time seeing some of it and heard about some of these fundings that are occurring toward that, the sidewalk out there. But what I'm getting out of this is that, from Nugget Market, essentially, you'll be able to walk down to the apartments down there at Robin Drive. Is that about accurate with what's in the budget design right now? That's a, that's a question. Will this design effort get us to Robin Drive, and, within what's here, and then, construction to follow? And you've heard all of the commentary about dealing with the parking and the various uses of Paradise Drive shoulders and how to do that. So, I don't know what the projects look like. People are clamoring to know about it, and if there was a way for the town to post what the design effort is and what it looks like and what it includes, I think that would go a long ways toward informing and helping us on the commission actually talk about what the town plan is. Thank you.
If I could, I guess to get from the, from the Nugget Market to Robin Drive, there could be a bit of a gap in there. But, but one of these projects, again, will go from, from the San Clemente Path, which I'll, you know, call the San Clemente Path, to Seawolf. And as far as what these are gonna look like, that, that will be presented. We're not gonna come, we're not gonna hire a consultant to design this thing and then come and ask the council to approve the plans and specs. We, this will certainly be addressed at BPAC throughout the course, and I'm happy to present it to the Planning Commission throughout the course of the design. But we wanna do that, we wanna get public input on it, because that's who's gonna use the path. So, anyhow, we'll, we definitely will present these things to you through the course of the design and actually get your input, and we'd love to have Planning Commission input as well as public input on it throughout.
But sort of right now, do we need to sort of conceptually say, you know, let's reserve X part, X portion of the right-of-way on the north side, south side, and don't do anything to it or with it, 'cause you'll probably need it for pathway? And I'm being real vague.
Yeah, no, I get it, and I'd have to be vague in my answer, because, again, we, you know, we're, we're at concept stage, and concept more in the mind than it is on paper right now. But I can't think of any right-of-way we need to reserve at this point. Again, the restrictions I mentioned along Paradise from San Clemente down to Seawolf, they're physical restrictions, not necessarily right-of-way restrictions. Our gate structure, that's a massive gate structure. There, it would be really difficult to move that.
I'm thinking from Robin Drive.
Yeah, from, from.
Towards the schools.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know exactly where the right-of-way line is there, but I, I think that what I see on that stretch, westward to Robin, the two biggest problems, I, I see this path on the south side of Paradise Drive, number one. I see environmental problems with, you know, we have a open drainage ditch there that is considered a wetland by many. I see that being an issue, and we do have utilities. There's a, I think it's twelve KVA electric line that runs on those poles, high voltage, which is very difficult and very, very expensive to underground. Those poles could be in the way, I can envision that, but maybe not. So, they'd be the biggest constraints on that stretch, and the biggest constraint on that, this stretch towards us would be that flood control gate structure. But, but I can't, yeah, I don't see, I, I'd fully understand your question, but I don't see any, anything that we would have to reserve or, you know, try to acquire.
Well, no, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll be all right.
Can we go back to public comment? Because poor Jim's been standing there waiting, so, sorry about that, Jim?
No problem. Jim Robinson, Ash Haven, and Corda Madera. I guess I had a general question, and I sympathize with our Public Works Director. When people used to ask me what the biggest problem in town is, I always say, just talk to the last person I spoke with, and they'll tell you. I fully sympathize. So, my question is, you've identified some priority projects, some that I also envision as priority, so I appreciate that, but wonder, when you adopt the budget, you have a budget before you that shows two thousand seventeen, eighteen funds being appropriated, and I'm wondering if the ultimate budget will show which projects you consider to be priorities and which ones you plan to get done this next year. And I, also, I won't use the word that you use, but I would say contingency funds are important, because I would hope you'd have those, particularly as someone comes up with another new project or a priority project, so that they can get done. I know that we sometimes forget about the costs involved of delaying a project. I know you've probably had that experience, one of your pet projects been delayed, then you find it's considerably expensive the next time around, maybe it's no longer a priority because of that. So, hopefully, you'll be able to come up with what you consider to be your priority projects. With respect to project twenty-one, I'm very pleased to see that there are funds providing the budget for that. This is a project that I know Councilmember Bob Ravasi was tired of hearing me talk to BPAC about for the past five years. I know that the flashing barricade that was there for like four years, that Clairen Jorgensen, our former mayor, whose home looked like a movie set for a film noir movie for four years, he'll be happy that, and it's been gone for a year. But it's a critical project, I know every project's critical, but I'd hope that that would get done this year. And I have no vested interest in it, I have no kids or grandkids that, you know, come in school, but I just drive by it, so I see that visible reminder that something needs to be done there. Project number thirty, replacing damaged sidewalks at Preyslo location. I know there's a lot of issues associated with that, but I'm pleased to see there's some money in there to do that, and I'm hopeful that, at some point in the time, the town will be able to have additional monies that we have to compete with BPAC Bicycle and other types of improvements. So, we always usually end up on the short end of the stick, but I'm glad to see we have some money there for this next year. The one that I didn't quite understand was the Title Barrier Project, number nine, shows three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of sales tax revenues that'd be provided for the goal of completing a title barrier. And I, I did, I'd not heard any discussion about that over the years. I thought it was dinosaur, it was long dead, but just curious, from a curiosity standpoint, why that's in there and what we plan to do with that money. And I wanna reiterate that the cost of not doing projects and the impact it has, and if you have the flexibility of providing some additional funds to support the town manager, the Public Works Director, in completing priority projects, even requires some additional funding. I encourage you not to hesitate if it's possible, so you don't find yourself in a bind not being able to get a project done, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start with the Title Barrier Project. Yeah, that was a dinosaur, it was addressed a lot in the nineteen nineties. That dinosaur is dead and sinking out of Mariner Cove with the rest of Mariner Cove. We, and this is the reason we're closing Golden Hind at Epti Passage each winter, because it's sinking. This, we did a townwide drainage study, completed a townwide drainage study, I guess, in two thousand something. And, you know, it identified the need, which we do have the need, for a barrier, title barrier around Mariner Cove, because of the settlement we have out there. And the total rough estimate for that title barrier was about twenty million dollars. The area out on that east end of Golden Hind is sinking the most, because it has the most bay mud under it. It's underland by over a hundred feet of bay mud. If anyone's ever interested, I have a bay mud contour map in my office that'll show you with contours where the bay mud is and how deep it is. But that's the worst spot in town, and because of that, it's where we get the most settlement. Eventually, we're gonna have to build a title barrier around, all the way around Mariner Cove. Now, in the nineteen nineties, what the thought was, was, yes, we need a barrier, but the thought at that time was to put a barrier, this stretch of barrier, along, you know, east of Golden Hind there, and then put a tide gate across San Clemente Creek, and then build a barrier, you know, an outboard barrier, straight across, which would have been a lot cheaper, but it was squashed because of environmental issues. It was just, it died. I don't think we should ever even try to relook at that. That's all fishing game property out there, or fishing wildlife. And we're gonna have to have some sort of title barrier, it's gonna have to go on that stretch, stop at the creek, come down along the inside of the creek, all the way to Paradise Drive, go back up along the creek, and then just follow the perimeter of that subdivision. And again, that's a many-years-ago estimate in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars. So, this would be a piece of that. And, you know, this is a five-year project, at least. This would be a start.
Starting to look at it and.
Yes.
And.
Look, look at the, you know, regulatory process that we would need to go through. Look at the funding process. I can envision funding here from, you know, start with general fund, from sales tax, from flood tax, from assessment district. I hate to bring up that word, but we're gonna have to look at every type of funding that could possibly be available, because, you know, I'm not stopping at this, whatever I had there, four point three million. You know, I'm thinking of the twenty million dollar complete project, we really have to, we have to start addressing this. And each year, you're gonna see that more and more, because of the settlement.
I have a question. It may be far-fetched, but is it possible to get money from the insurance companies that insure the people there? I mean, the developer's probably long gone.
I tell you what, since we have another member of the public who would like to speak.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Karen.
Would you mind thinking about that? And when we come back to a discussion after the public comments.
I can do that, I'm sorry.
Would you mind addressing that? Because that's, that's a good question. Karen, thank you for your patience.
Oh.
We're trying to be responsive to the questions we're hearing.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate it.
Shoot.
I was trying not to get snarky there, but it's hard. It's my genetics. So, when I actually prepared comments that I was going to make and wrote them all out and figured out how long it would take me to say them, so, I was heartened by some of the things that, this is Karen Gervosi, I live at one eleven Parkview Circle. I'm the chairperson of the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee for the Half-Cent Sales Tax that was passed by our voters in November of two thousand and thirteen. So, anyway, when Todd was speaking about looking, it seems that there's a little more attention to kind of hitting the marks on all six categories of what was approved or what the voters considered. So, I just wanted to say that when our committee met, which I think now was about a week ago, that the committee members are concerned about some equitability amongst all of the areas. And there isn't any, I mean, but when you figure out you've got street projects that are a quarter of a million dollars, you're certainly not gonna come up with a quarter of a million dollars that you're going to spend on, I don't think, on seniors and youth or a quarter of a million that you're gonna spend on disaster preparedness. However, I think there's gonna come a point when it could be that the town, the council wades into the conversation of what do we wanna do? And do we wanna, quote, extend this measure? Do we want another Measure D, I think it was? And so, I think when that occurs, that there is going to have to be an addressing of how responsive the spending was to what was, quote, "a promise to the citizens" when we passed the thing in the first place. The other thing that I just wanted to say, and I think that my numbers are accurate, and I'm not quite sure, but it looks like of all the capital items for this year, that fifty-five percent of it comes from the sales tax override for the, the capital budgets. Now, does that seem about right? So, that's something I think that is worthwhile for the council to have some awareness about where does the money come from for the capital items? And besides the fifty-five percent that came, that is coming, that is budgeted from the cap, the sales tax, another sixteen percent comes from the storm drain special tax. And I think both of those, while I know that the override is terminal, and I think that the special, the storm drain special tax doesn't go on and on forever either. So, it's just, I think, worthwhile to note where the money comes from with the capital items, and that's the nature of the thing. So, I didn't, oh, I did have a question, not a question, I know I'm in sudden death overtime over here. On page fifty-five, just speaking of the dead dinosaur, the title barrier, on page fifty-five, it's a title barrier, T-I-T-L-E. Just saying.
Thank you.
Diane, can I ask a question?
Well, yes.
Karen, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is it, is it your view, or maybe I should say, is it the Sales Tax Advisory Committee's view that the allocation of the funds to date is consistent with what they were meant for?
No, they, they think that there should be some more equitability, so that it's strongly skewed to four of the six areas, and very lightly on the two other, which is disaster, preparedness, and whatever that goes with, and then the, the senior and youth item. So, I think that if you were to ask the committee, there's people amongst the committee that think that if they were to ask to be vote right now about a new Measure D, they'd be like, no. So.
Thank you.
That's just some of the tenor of, of their feeling about it. In fact, one of the members of the committee actually thought that when we passed the sales tax, that somehow her property taxes were gonna go down. Now, I think that's delusional. However, I don't, I don't know if she's the only person in all of Corda Madera that had that thought, because I know that as a former board president of my HOA, that people have these weird thoughts about when something is gonna go down. You know, your property taxes is never gonna go down. But she actually thought that somehow, when we passed the half percent, that there was gonna be some offset gift someplace else.
Thank you.
I just wanna follow up on that. I, I do recall when we were first discussing the sales tax override, it was always couched in terms of the fact that the town needed, not only to build up reserves, but we had a lot of projects and capital expenditures for things like equipment that had been put. off during the economic downturn, that we really needed to start spending again, and it was really creating a financial difficulty for the town, because, you know, revenues weren't, were not bouncing back as quickly as we had hoped. So the, the sales tax override, override was anticipated to kind of be a, an assistance to the town to help get back into, get on top of some of the expenditures after the economic downturn. Not to alleviate property taxes, but again, people, you know, have their own way of looking at things.
No, but we, we probably need to think about, not now, but the information that gave me is that we need to think about whether we're communicating appropriately that the, that the money's being well-spent. In my sense, it is. But if the people whose job it is to oversee that don't see it that way, then there's some disconnect.
I would absolutely agree with that, and I think that's something that I have spoken to Todd, anyway, in private about. I will say one thing that Todd said today that I think is not reflected in this budget, and that is that we are going to be looking at our facilities to see what we can do to better utilize what we have to support the programs we want in the future. So for instance, if we are going to be expanding senior and teen programs, we need classrooms and places to meet. How can we use what we already have, maybe in a smarter configuration, to allow for more flexible, flexible use of our facilities? For instance, we have that little classroom off on the side of our community center. The, the one wall doesn't even go all the way to the roof, so it's hard to hold a program in there when there are people working next door in the offices. And anyway, how can we, so there might be some capital expenditures in that respect that I can see going forward. And I would really love to hear from maybe Todd and Dave, if you could address kind of what you see as a bigger picture, maybe in the future, that hopefully might alleviate concerns that we aren't addressing these expenditures in the sales tax override fund equitably.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think these are, it's a good conversation. It's, it's one that is one of my number-one priorities when I talk to people, and I, and I think it starts here in a budget hearing. I think first of all, when you look at page 70, that's what the six item, the six areas it could be spent for. And so the first question is, is the town spending the monies appropriately within the six designated areas? The question's yes. It's within those six designated areas. Now, the education comes into play, right? Because then it's equity. Well, when we have a $20 million flood control system infrastructure conversation, well, we're talking about capital improvements projects, equity, I guess the question when we talk to our, our public is safe routes to schools, you know, the expenditures, our roads, our infrastructure, our streets, we spent 2.5 million. How much should we spend towards disaster preparedness? And just because our community said, hey, you can spend tax proceeds towards disaster preparedness, we're taking the budget inside out. Don't forget that. We subsidize youth programs at, by $500,000 to $600,000 annually from our general fund. Don't forget that, you know? And just because our community said you can spend that $500,000 for youth programs, well, guess what? We could just, does that mean they expect us to take our general fund, operating fund, and put 500,000 into the sales tax override and charge that? Because that would meet the criteria of the tax. That's not right. That's not, wasn't the intent of the community. And I think, first of all, my point is to educate our community that what we're trying to do is, we don't want to have any taxes. If we don't have to tax someone, we don't want to have a tax. And so we're going to work inside out. We're going to take our operating fund of 17 to 18 million, and we're going to try to find ways to reduce our costs by the conversation that we've had tonight. And so if I don't have to use monies for youth programs, as an example, because I can come up with a good funding plan within the park and rec budget of our funding plan, you know, our cost recovery, then that's what I am going to try to do. I think that's the expectation that any of our taxpayers have of us. So I don't think you can look at this page and say, it's not equitable. I think you have to look at the big picture. Disaster preparedness. You have $20,000 budgeted, but our budget is 64,000 this year, the highest it's ever been in the last decade. And, you know, because the rest is taken from the general fund. Because if we don't have to spend tax proceeds, we're not going to. We're going inside out. We're focusing on operate the general fund first. So I think it's an education for our oversight committee, because they have to be able to tell that story, and then for our community. And so I am a little bit concerned about what I just heard, because that, that's a problem. And I think it goes to the point of, we need to get out there and tell the story. This has to be understandable, and, and, and people have to, have to believe in it. One of the criticisms early on, when I first came on as manager, was, you know, you were buying lawnmowers to cut the, the fields for the youth programs. Does it meet the criteria? It does. Does it look good on paper here? Yeah, it does. It's a good number. And then you're comparing them to previous years, but we also have an equipment replacement fund, and it has 2.6 million in it. We're going to use that fund for our equipment and replacement. We're not going to use tax dollars. And so that's why you see this, this difference of 182,000, and it drops to 37. That doesn't look good on paper, but my argument is, we're doing our job. We're doing what a taxpayer expects of their town. You take general fund monies first before you take our tax monies. And that's what we're doing. And I think that's the story that we need to tell, and, and I hear it loud and clear tonight. So that's what I'll be doing, starting tomorrow, one by one, and telling that story. I don't know, my concern, and you touched on it, 55%, I don't know if it's 55%, but to maintain or improve our infrastructure over the next 20 years without this sales override tax, or some combination with the flood control tax, I don't know how we're going to do it, you know? And that's clear. And I think that goes into first, budgeting the right way, making it simple to understand, identifying what the long-term solutions are, and coming up with funding solutions so our community understands it. So, you know, it, it, we got a lot in front of, we have a lot of work to do, but I think this, and I thank Daria for this, because I think it really simplifies, it starts the conversation with this document, but now we have to expand it on, I think. And I, and I'm not quite sure how we do that, you know, because this whole conversation about youth programs, I'm really surprised. I mean, we've supplemented it anywhere from 600 to 900,000 for the last three to four years, we've subsidized those programs, and people don't know that.
Yeah. I think, may I say one more thing there? Karen, I don't know when the next meeting is, but I think it would be useful, Todd, if Daria's willing to come, and probably David and you, and I wouldn't mind attending. It might be useful to have a, a discussion with the advisory committee and get their input, and give them our own perspective, and see whether, whether there's some, some commonality there.
Sure, absolutely.
Hold on, let's, Karen wanted to make a comment.
Well, two things. We expect that our next meeting will be after this fiscal year closes, and then after all the numbers are in, so that our next meeting will be when we do the review of the current fiscal year, the one that's going to be done in 10 days. So we are foreseeing that that will happen sometime in September.
Okay, September.
The, the other thing that I just wanted to say, that going forward, I think one of the things to have learned is that perhaps it was, now in reflection, ill-advised to let, have these six items. Maybe there should have only been four. Because when people see those six, they think they're going to get divided up, and they're, when you look at what the town needs to spend money on, it's really the four. I mean, you were buying fire trucks last year or the year before, for, you know, huge amounts of money. So just going forward, if you're going to run another measure up the flagpole, I wouldn't put anything in there about disaster preparedness, or, or seniors and whatnot, because that's not where you really need to spend the money.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say one thing, and maybe this would be worthwhile to go back and look at the actual wording of the initiative, but I recall that there wasn't a real specifics listed. There were other cities that went out for a similar type thing, and just dumped all their money into the general fund. We actually were trying to do it the right way, and have some oversight, and really kind of describe, but I, my recollection is we didn't describe with real specificity, which is probably not helping this whole endeavor, but just go ahead.
Yeah, let me just comment on it, because as you know, I was...
Karen, there's no, I...
This is the Measure B, if you wanted to see what it's...
Yeah, I have a copy of that in my folder right here, but both the flyer that went out, it was instrumental in hiring the consultant who read the flyer. With the Madam Mayor's help, we reviewed that and edited it. What preceded this list of six items was, well, we will spend your money on items such as. We shouldn't forget that such as. All of this money, this was a general fund obligation. It goes to the general fund. It can be spent, I mean, technically, it can be spent on anything. But again, keep in mind, and when you read it, both the flyer and the resolution that was passed, I think it was in August of 2013, that, that called for the vote on this, it described these six items, and it had, we're going to spend the money on items such as. You have to, you know, tell the public what, and the consultant we had was very good. He had written these kind of, these flyers for, there are a lot of tax measures going on with different cities at the time. He had written several of them. So anyhow, it'd be good, and I, I think it is education. I don't think anything on either that flyer or the resolution, you know, said, hey, we're going to specifically spend money, this tax money, if we, if it's approved, on these items and only these items. I mean, it certainly was, it was just an example of what it could be used for.
No, I, I mean, if I may, I don't think we need to spend more time on this. I just, my, my comment is, what, what appears to be laid bare to me is it's purely a communication issue. I don't have any problem with these six categories. I also don't have any problem with the monies, the way that they were spent within these six categories. But if somebody receiving that information believes that it ought to have been distributed in a different way, that's probably our job to describe to those people why it was spent in this way, and why it would not have been appropriate to have spent it with a greater proportion going to things like, I don't know, senior and youth programs or disaster preparedness. Not that these aren't good categories and that money's validly spent on, but rather, why did we only put 20 grand in that and 600 grand into flood control, or 400 grand, right? I mean, there were serious life safety issues that make for a very justifiable explanation, and that is not supported by the language of the ballot measure or anything else, and that that gap can be bridged purely by a discussion, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think Todd addressed very well that we'll work on communications, so thank you.
I think one really quick point.
I was at that meeting of the oversight, and I think Todd would be most disturbed to learn that one of the members of the committee said, I certainly hope they're not going to renew this. I will work hard to make sure it doesn't pass.
Yeah, all right.
So absolutely, Sloan's right, that there was an issue in understanding it. And what Diane said, too, is that it was a bridge, and people thought it was a bridge.
Listen, we've already had public comment. Jim, I'll let you go if you can make it super quick, and then if there's anybody else from the public, fine, we'll let them speak, and then we'll close the public comment. Jim?
As someone that supported the measure, and I read the language, and I concur with Mr. Bracken's description, that's how I remember it as a citizen of the town of Corder Madera. But I would also add that, to complement our town manager's comments, that if you look at senior and youth program expenditures, it's 37,347, but in reality, you have a number of sidewalk projects that are being completed with these monies, including the project in front of Neil Cummins School. And if you remember from the senior survey that was done, the number-one project that seniors identified in terms of capital projects were safe sidewalks. You'll concur with me on that. So let's make sure that we're not comparing apples, oranges, because, and I think it's good from what Councilman Bailey has mentioned about concurring and making sure the language is, is consistent. But in any event, I think that there's probably, we're shortchanging ourselves as to what we are doing within our budget relative to complying with the intent, although it wasn't identified that they'd be specific priority, but I consider sidewalk improvements senior projects, and as I've said, they've been identified as the number-one priority by our senior system survey that was done.
Thank you for that. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment now. All righty. Any other...
Can we vote?
Well, no, no, no.
I wanted to...
Yeah, I want to revisit, and I definitely want to revisit that. Anything else on the sales tax override? Okay. Dave, Carla had asked you about insurance. Would you like to...
I, I would. I like that idea. Let me just say that with sidewalks, we, we have a standard, when somebody complains about a sidewalk tripping hazard or whatever, we have a standard letter we send out and say, call your insurance company, because Hummers Insurance will typically cover that. Whether or not they would cover this kind of thing, I don't know, but certainly, as part of this project, as I mentioned before, funding is, is part of the design, how we're going to fund it, determining that, and we will certainly look into that. It's a great idea.
Yeah, it was, the reason I brought it up is that I know someone who had a horrible settling problem in her house 30 years after she purchased it new. The developer was long gone, and she went to her, her insurance company and had it all fixed.
Well, I appreciate that. I will explore, I can promise you, explore every avenue for funding sources.
Army Corps of Engineers?
Army Corps, even though we, that's, that's part of that dead dinosaur out there, but anyhow, we'll, we'll go back to the Army Corps. You bet.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about this? All right. We're done with this portion, so shall we move on to the sewer fund?
All right. Okay, the sanitary district budget begins on page 109, and the sanitary district is considered a component unit of the town, which means that it's a legally separate entity for which the town council is financially accountable. So there's on page, beginning on page 111, there's the sewer general operating fund, and that's where property tax revenue and also sewer service charges are recorded. And the expenditures in this fund include expenditures related to sewer district administration, sanitation maintenance, and Central Marin Sanitation Agency expenditures, and also included as a transfer to the sewer capital maintenance fund, which has no revenue of its own. So the sorts of things that are charged here are those, those employee costs, which are now listed under services and supplies on page 114, as town of Corder Madera, 349,500. And so the other things listed in this fund have to do with contract personnel, charges for Marin MAP, and billing services. In the, on the next page, there's also things included in there, such as $250,000 worth of sewer main cleaning, $13,000 for backflow testing, $40,000 for sewer main repair, 10,000, or, excuse me, $110,000 for contract personnel services, charges for Bay Area Quality Management District in the amount of $10,000. So those are the sorts of things that are charged to this fund. And then on page 116, you'll see listed the items that are paid to Central Marin Sanitation Agency. And that, so those, all of those expenditures total about $3.2 million. And then in addition to that, a transfer of approximately $2.1 million is made to the sewer capital maintenance fund, which on page 118 lists the expenditures, which include inspection of sewer mains, assessment, master plan update, infrastructure management, flow meter vault improvement, fire pump station improvement, and emergency sewer repair projects. So this fund doesn't have any ending balance. It just, whatever expenditures are incurred, are paid for from a transfer in from the sewer capital fund, that first fund. And then the final fund within the sanitary district is a sewer connection fee project fund, which also, there's, it's, it has no revenue of its own either, or any ending balance. It's, as sewer connection fees are incurred, they're, they're paid. So those are the three, those are the three funds within the sanitary district.
I have a question on that. Daria, with the Trinidad pump station improvement, do we collect any money from Tiburon on that? Or how is that financed?
No, that, that, that area, well, number one, it's in the county, not in Tiburon. We have two pump stations, well, we have more than two pump stations, but Trinidad one and two, one being the bigger of the two, Trinidad pump station... one and two, one being the bigger of the two Trinidad pump stations. But that is in the county. They pay sewer user charges, they being the residents out there, just like everyone else, and that, that funds these projects. I don't want to say they only fund the projects out of Paradise K. It goes into our, our sewer fund. So, so it's not, no, we don't collect anything from Tiburon or the county in that respect, per se, for these projects.
So are we then outlaying the money, Cordera Madera, for?
Well, the sanitary district, yes. The sanitary district pays for these projects, just like we would pay for the Pfeiffer pump station or Paradise pump station, we being the sanitary district collectively, which as you know, is Cordera Madera plus areas in the county and plus a small portion in Larkspur and, and that. So, you know, the, the basic funding source for this are the sewer user fees that everybody pays each year.
Okay, so we're getting?
Yes, we're getting money from, from those residents, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask a follow-up, because that just made me think about something. So let's just take the folks out in the K. So it's, it's unincorporated Marin.
Yes.
They pay sewer user fees.
Yes.
Does any portion of their property taxes come back to the sanitary district?
I believe so, yes. But before I said that, you know, in the microphone and on the camera, I, I would want to double check to make sure it's the same amount, and I'm almost positive it is, but want to double check to make sure it's the same amount as, say, a Cordera Madera resident, that portion of their property tax goes to the, to sanitary.
Right, okay.
It is a portion, and I'm almost sure it's the same percentage as somebody in Cordera Madera would, the percentage they, their property tax would pay.
Because the percentage does change among different towns, actually. It's kind of odd.
It is, so that's why I don't want to, you know, say, say 100% sure.
All right. So, you know, looking at, at page 112.
I'll find it out though.
The bulk of our, of this, the sewer district funding comes from a portion of the property taxes and the sewer charge that shows up on people's property tax bill as a supplemental charge. That's the vast majority of.
That's the vast majority, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any member of the public like to speak to this? Seeing none, bring it back. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion.
So, well, hold on. We need to, that, that was agenda item 6.1. So now we will move, and that was the, so I'm closing the public hearing, which was for the town operating budget, the capital budget, and the sanitary district budget. We are now moving on to agenda item 6.1.1, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 33/2017, adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. This is for the town of Cordera Madera. So if there are no questions or comments of staff, any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Anybody want to make a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first. Yes. Thank you. Let's move on to agenda item 6.1.2, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 34/2017, adopting the town capital projects budget for fiscal year 2017 to 2018. Any questions or comments of staff? Any public comment? Yes.
Again, Jim Robinson, sorry to belabor the point, but I'm just curious, what number of projects are going to be improved in this capital improvement budget? Will they all be those identified in the budget that was submitted tonight, the proposed budget?
All those with expenditures in the next fiscal year will be, will have expenditures, not necessarily completed though. Some of those are starting the process by initial design or something like that.
Because we started the discussion identifying the priority projects. So I just want to make clear that those that are identified, that have funds for 2017, 2018, those are the items that are being appropriated for this fiscal year?
Well, yes. Anything with an amount that for 20, right, 2017, 2018. If you look at the capital budget, you can see that many of those have amounts down for future years.
I've seen that.
Yeah, so that might be constructed.
I'm just talking about the ones in the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I would ask, though, is that some of the funding descriptions might need to be slightly updated. So if, well, first of all, any other public comments? All right, I'll close public comment. And I will entertain a motion, but I would like it, like for the person making the motion to allow for some minor typos to be corrected.
And funding sources.
In terms of funding sources.
So move with modifications.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first. Yes, thank you. Now, this is a question I have for you, Teresa. We, the sanitary district is a component unit. Do I, do we actually need to adjourn as the town council and readjourn as the sanitary district, or just as long as we vote on those items separately, it's okay?
It's my understanding that your practice here has been, as long as you are clear on your agenda, what you're doing, and you're voting on them separately, that, that has been the practice and that should be sufficient.
Thank you.
Does the town manager have any other concerns?
Okay, thank you. So we are all done with the town operating budget and the town capital budget. We will now be voting on the sanitary district budget. This is consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 04/2017, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2017 for the sanitary district and its agenda item 6.2.1.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Board Member Andrews?
Yes.
Board Member Bailey?
Yes.
Board Member Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice President Condon?
Yes.
President first. Yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Nice budget. Good job. All right, let's move on to business items. Again, this is back to town of Cordera Madera, agenda item 7.1.1, consideration and possible action to either, one, adopt ordinance number 966, amending section 2.38 of the town of Cordera Madera municipal code to move the November 2017 election to June 2018, resulting in an extension of the current council terms up to six months. Or, number two, adopt resolution 28/2017, calling the election for November 7, 2017, and requesting the county of Marin to consolidate the election.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to take this one, and we also have the town attorney here that can jump in at any point. I just, again, this has been about a one-month conversation that we've been discussing this issue. At the June 6, 2017 town council meeting, the town council discussed available options and voted to introduce ordinance 966 of moving the election from November 7 to June 5 of 2018. During its deliberations, I wanted to remind the town council, discussed the purpose of the Senate bill 415, which was to increase voter turnout. By moving the municipal elections from November 2017 to June 2018, the town has the potential to double its voter turnout, which was 32.09% in November of 2015. Neighboring municipalities hold elections in June of even years typically experience a voter turnout anywhere in the range of 60 to 65%. And so we have the opportunity to potentially double our voter turnout by moving it to the June 18 election. The second issue discussed, of importance to the council in its discussions, was the cost savings. And I apologize for this. This was my error, and I should have further information at the last meeting. But I estimated in that meeting that it was approximately $20,000. But as, as we discussed, we just weren't sure. We needed further information. And so that, that analysis has been done. It's the second paragraph on page two of your report. We've confirmed with the elections office that the approximate savings by moving it from November to June of 2018 is a little bit over $30,000 in savings potential to the, to the town of Cordera Madera. And item three, while the town council amended the election ordinance in 2016, that change affected only the 2022 election. Although the state elections code does not allow the council to make another change to the 2022 election date, the elections code does not prevent the town from making changes to 2017 and the 2019 election schedules. And so I wanted to point those three key conversation and factors. I think they were decision points for the council at the last meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the town attorney as well.
All right, any questions? Over here, over here. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I will bring it back for council discussion or a motion? Okay, don't all clamor to make a motion all at once. This is what we just, I just want to say, add one thing maybe. We discussed this not only at the last meeting, but the meeting before. So this is our third meeting where we've discussed this. And according to my count, I have only seen two comments on this. I got an email from somebody supporting the extension to June. There was another thing that was a little bit off-base and, you know, a comment that was online, on local newspaper. I won't get into that, because I think the, the facts were a little mixed, muddied up on that one. But we've discussed this two meetings in a row. So folks, anybody want to make a motion or comment?
Yeah, I'll comment. I think that probably most of us felt very awkward taking a position of extending our term. I know I, I felt uncomfortable about it, except for the fact that it is turning out to save the town probably over $30,000. And as I mentioned before, when I first took office, and I've tried to be that way consistently, is to be prudent. And I think that for that reason, it would be worth it in the long run to adopt the ordinance moving the November election to June.
I will make, okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 966, amending sections 2.38 of the town of Cordera Madera municipal code to move the November 2017 election to June 2018, resulting in an extension of the current council terms up to six months.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And before we call the vote, I just want to mention, thank you, Carla, for your comments. And to anybody who's out there watching, I don't want them to think we're just rushing into this. We had a very long discussion, especially at our last meeting. So go watch the video of the last meeting if you want to see the extended discussion on this. Thank you. With that, Rebecca, would you mind calling the vote, please? Councilmember Andrews?
No.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first. Yes, thank you. The motion passes. Moving on, we have already, earlier in tonight's meeting, addressed agenda item 7.1.2, appointments to various boards. So let's move on to 7.1.3, discussion and possible action to approve town of Cordera Madera responses to Marin County Civil Grand Jury report, overcoming barriers to housing affordability. Mr. Adam Wolfe, our Director of Planning and Building.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You have before you this evening a draft response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury regarding their report, as you mentioned, which is titled, "Overcoming Barriers to Housing Affordability." Tonight, asking for your review of that draft response. Receive any public comment and direct staff to modify as desired. And we're recommending that the council authorize the mayor to execute a draft response based on any comments or revisions as you deem necessary. The, the response must be submitted to the civil grand jury by July 12, 2017. So a little bit of time to develop, change things if necessary. But again, I know we don't have a council meeting July 5, so would recommend that you authorize the mayor to execute with, again, any revisions as necessary. So I'm not going to go necessarily into all of the findings. They're, they're pretty, they're laid out, I think, pretty straightforward, I thought. Interestingly enough, I think the actual responses that were requested of the town were related more to process and were limited to, I think, the planning process, how we conduct community outreach, meeting with developers early in the process, streamlining our process, and noticing and how to make noticing better. I think this is obviously a very challenging issue. I think the, the grand jury in the report points out a number of, of concerns or barriers that are clearly challenging issues to overcome. But again, our, our response, as requested by the civil grand jury, is really related to the planning process. I've tried to highlight what we do, I think we implement already several, actually all of them, but the one that I said we would review is, is looking at our public noticing and see if we can make it formatted better, clearer, use less jargon, and so on, if possible. But happy to answer any questions, have comments, discussion, as you see fit, on this, on this issue.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Elaborate as necessary to.
Any questions or comments?
I don't, well, I have a question slash comment, so I don't know. First, the letter, as you've written it, is excellent. But reading the grand jury report, my gut reaction, after reading it through a couple of times, was, okay, what about the developers' responsibility? Okay? You have develop, and I'm just thinking, planning in general, you have developers come in and say, rewrite your ordinances, rewrite your general plan, okay? Example, I guess, what was it, 1441 Casabuena came in, nothing happened, you know, well, let me rephrase what happened. Basically, he was in planning for over a year before he was finally rejected. And, you know, basically, he was ignoring most of our ordinances, most of our general plan guidance. And if he was frustrated that we were nimby's because we wouldn't let, we wouldn't rewrite things for him, you know, so that's one example. Less than a year later, somebody else, same property, came in, followed all the ordinances, best I can tell, was in, within the spirit of our general plan, and they put in their, they filed their paperwork, was it July 7, and they were approved by 26? So, you know, somewhere in the letter, I'd like to push back against the assumption of the grand jury that it's all the town's resistance. If they came, if folks came in with projects that were in harmony with existing ordinances, existing general plans, exist, existing housing elements, they probably would not meet as much resistance. But instead, it's sort of like, we're supposed to rewrite everything for them, and there's no obvious benefit to the town from us doing that. So I don't know. So, I don't know how to put it, I mean...
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I'll open it up to public comment. Any public comments? Seen none? I'll close that. Okay. Council deliberations? Hello? Anybody want to move approval of the letter?
I thought it was really well-done. I'll move approval of the letter. With the changes that Councilman Andrews recommended.
Well, then, we'd need to discuss how to address that.
Oh, we have to do it by July 5. We don't have a meeting by July 5, excuse, on July 5, so, I'm sorry. Hang on.
My opinion is that they're addressing kind of what local, you know, agencies can do, that this is not about developers coming in and wanting to ask for the world. So, I personally don't think it's entirely appropriate, but I'm sure we could add a little something if people thought it was important. I thought the response was actually very well-written.
Bob, do you want to modify it to, do you want to include Jim's comments? And if so, then modify it and direct maybe him to add some language, or alternatively, make the motion without the modification?
I, sorry.
No, I would welcome your thoughts, Adam.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a way to work in, in response one, where the basic recommendation is each planning department should begin regularly scheduled meetings at which developers can speak early in the process with all relevant members of staff. In the response, we talk about pointing out policy issues or technical problems that they should address.
Right.
And in that, I think, somehow emphasizing or elaborating on that a little bit more to say, and they should, you know, strongly consider modifications to the project in response to the staff recommendations to help move projects forward, or something like that.
Well, I, no, I don't think it should be worded quite...
I'm not getting the precise line of the trade.
Right. But specifically addressing developers that come in and want wholesale exceptions to be made to general plan zoning, what have you. I mean, let's be really specific, that they ask for, you know, changes to the general plan, changes to zoning, exceptions to certain setbacks or what have you.
I mean, does, frankly, I mean, does it, is this, just to point out, the response, they say, "We agree that these meetings can provide valuable information that can inform prospective applicants of potential policy issues and technical problems that should be seriously considered and addressed before moving forward to the application process." I mean, is that not what you're...
Well...
I'd rather, frankly, leave it more, that's my view.
I thought it was fine as written.
More vague than getting specific and say, "When we're going to create some threshold, that's when it becomes a problem," or not.
Can I make a comment? I, I don't know if it's, you know, if you want to put in, but just looking back, years back, when we did actually build San Clemente, one of the things was, it originally was supposed to be mixed as far as income levels went. And at that time, unbeknownst to planning or to the council, the developer was finding it difficult to get funding that would fund the project with different income levels. It was easier just to have it low. And I would just say in...
Is your microphone on?
Keep going, keep going. I just did.
Thank you. And I would just suggest that rather than put the onus on the town, that it's up to federal funding sources to perhaps be a little bit more liberal with their policies to allow a feasible project to be built with a variety of income levels, everything from market rate to very low. I mean, it's just...
Can we do that in one sentence, somewhere?
Just what the federal government...
It's not really, okay.
Adjust their distribution, or their, yeah, are more flexible with funding the various levels of affordability.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, may I ask, can, when you put faith in, I think this, this is a good response, this is to the grand jury. I think it's, it's an appropriate response, to allow us some flexibility to take your comments, and we'll, we'll attempt to do our best to, to add some of this language.
Yeah, I can, let me throw out a couple of sentences, and I cribbed them from somebody who was commenting on a project. And one of his, they were describing an information meeting held in another jurisdiction. They said, "Most people spoke to the issue that all standards would be, would be upheld unless a significant community benefit would be provided to offset them." Then they spoke about that particular project and said they didn't see a significant community benefit. And then another comment was, "The developer should be told that the city would be willing to work with him, but he also had to work harder to conform to town standards, as opposed to the town conforming to his." And, you know, it's going to take a lot of polishing, but those are sort of some random thoughts.
All right. Why don't we stick with this in general principle, and maybe allow Adam to do his best to make minor tweaks to kind of address sort of what we've discussed?
It's a little weird saying, "We'll approve it with unpolished, vague comments."
Along the lines of what we just discussed, no? All right. I'm happy with it the way it's written, but if you guys...
Carla, give me your thing again. I don't, I don't really get Jim's, but tell me what you think.
Okay. What I was trying to get across is that historically, funding for a complete development, affordable development, it's harder to get funding for mixed tiers of affordability. That's partly why with Wind Cup, they insisted only on 10%, because it was basically market-rate development. And so, they probably weren't eligible for a lot of, a lot, if any, funding.
You'd like to modify the response to ask that federal authorities contribute in a greater proportion to any funding?
Yeah, to...
To offset the cost to the local municipalities?
Right. To a development that has a mixed level of affordability.
Would that be a separate outside response? Because within our responses to the questions, I don't know what, what would that...
Does that not really...
That doesn't fall under what they're asking us, though. They're asking us more procedure, process.
Just the process?
So, it doesn't...
What we can do to...
Okay. Then, then that doesn't even apply. But it's one thing that I think is a big problem.
Jim, you want to give it another shot?
If you say it's not applicable...
I think it, you know, I think it falls outside of, I think they're asking us how, what about our planning process and how we work with people who come through the door, so...
Okay.
Sloan, can I ask you something?
Yes.
If you, on page seven, which is the response to recommendation number one, second paragraph, so where it says, "Response," second sentence, "We agree these meetings can provide valuable information that can inform prospective applicants of potential policy issues and/or technical problems that should be seriously considered and addressed before moving forward to the application process." Do you feel that that addresses what you understand Jim to be saying?
I understand that that addresses the larger issue, as I would see it, and I'm comfortable with it. But I was, if Jim felt strongly about it and had some specific thing, I didn't mind adding it. To me, the original version of the letter is fine.
I'm fine with the original version.
But, you know, I want to see what you guys think.
Yeah. Especially if this doesn't, you know, really directly respond to what they're asking. My, my only feeling was that they should know it's, that they shouldn't always be pointing the blame at the town.
Yeah, I get it.
But there's, there are other impediments.
I would like to withdraw my motion.
Would you like to make a new motion?
I'm not sure where we are at this point. I think, yeah, I would move that we approve, the letter is written.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Thank you, folks. Moving on, agenda item 7.1.4, consideration and possible action to approve resolution 24/2017, establishing procedures and requirements for processing and consideration of development agreements.
You know, and I'm happy to listen to the report, this strikes me as something that we may want to continue to another meeting. Is that possible, or no? Or is that something we have to get done for this, for this meeting? Just a, just a thought.
I'm fine with continuing it. It's late.
I'm fading, just to be honest.
I'm fading.
Great.
Okay.
Adam, I'm, thank you for going through it, but...
No, no problem.
Thank you.
So, I move we continue it to a date certain? Is that how you do it? What, what's the motion to continue an item?
You could move to continue it to the next regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you, Sloan. Agenda item 7.1.5, review of draft, July 18, 2017, town council agenda. All right.
Putting the development agreement on that.
Add the development agreement.
Can I make one request? If not on this agenda, on an upcoming agenda? Would this be the time to bring that up?
Yes.
I'd like to request that we take another look at the leaf blower question.
Actually, I've already discussed that with Todd, and I think it's coming back.
I would, I would like to see this get done on an upcoming agenda. Larkspur has some experience with it now at this point, and Central Marin Police is going to be required to enforce it. And I know that consistent C in laws between municipalities helps the police.
It's one of the reasons we passed the last one.
Absolutely. Well, actually, Larkspur had to make a change, I believe, to theirs, but evidently, what they've got now is working well. Todd, how long do you think staff will need to pull together a board?
Yeah, it, it's not a perfect ordinance. I'm just going to tell you now, so, full disclosure. But my plan is, along with the marijuana workshop and ordinance that we have to do, there's, there's three ordinances we want to take up. I'm planning, if it's okay with you, in September, if that's okay. It gives me a little bit of time to kind of evaluate how it is working and, and come back to you, and I could start that conversation.
I'd like to only do it once, so...
Okay.
Well, then, we'll have to wait till after May, because in May, Larkspur is going to be amending theirs.
Yeah, they're going to do it.
To do commercials, yeah.
Yeah. I have a pretty good, okay, I think we could do something after summer, but if we wait...
That's the least I've...
Yeah. He said it.
All right. Anything else for the agenda?
Our projects are going to start coming through the line, so we're going to keep those agendas open, so you can hear the projects.
You mean, from the planning? Okay. Okay, thank you.
We have one more.
Moving on, 7.1.6, approval of the minutes of the June 6 town council meeting. Any changes?
Move to approve?
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Thank you. And then, now we are done with the town items, and we're on to sanitary district. Agenda item 7.2.1, discussion and possible action to approve sanitary district response to Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report, Overcoming Barriers to Housing Affordability.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Really quickly, this is a follow-up to the planning director's report from the grand jury. They also asked one response of the sanitary district. It was response number, recommendation number five. The question was, "Utility districts should adopt waivers for hookup fees for low-income housing projects and accessory dwelling units." And after discussing this with other sanitary districts, there are some concerns that it may come in conflict with other state laws, specifically Proposition 218. And as we begin to evaluate our fee schedule for the sanitary district in the coming months, it's the recommendation of the town attorney that we provide the following response, that we need further analysis, and we'll respond back to the grand jury in the next six months after we complete that analysis. And then, that's the recommendation.
All right. Any questions? Any public comment? All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the response to the grand jury.
Second. I've moved.
Second.
Third.
I think we've got, hold on.
We're all moved.
Who moved that? Carla?
No, Sloan moved it.
Sloan moved it. Carla seconded.
Hey, was I...
Board member Andrews?
Yes.
Board member Bailey?
Yes.
Board member Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice President Condon?
Yes.
President first.
Yes. Thank you. And then, finally, I want to encourage everybody to come out for 4th of July and notice our newly redesigned Tampa Pious Drive. Thank you, Public Works. Thank you, Julie Kritzberger, for all the hard work you're putting in to make 4th July Parade. Awesome. Happy summer, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.